This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, July 28, 2025 regular 6:00 P. M. meeting. Ricardo, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Lance Smith?
Here.
Jody Wilkinson?
Here.
Charles Proctor?
Here.
Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Stephen Spina?
Here.
Mayor Munson?
Here.
William Poe?
Here.
Matt Newton?
Here.
All right. If we could stand, and we're going to have Pastor Kendall DeFord give the prayer. Then we'll... Oh, no, we should, we should have it turned around.
All right, let's pray this evening. Father, we love you so much tonight. We're so aware of your love for us, and we thank you for that. Thank you for the many ways you bless us, the many ways you show your love to us. One of those blessings is just living in this community, working and knowing these people. We pray continued safety for our first responders. Thank you for the way you keep your hand over them. I just pray that you would be exhibited in everything that transpires tonight, and that your name would be glorified. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving forward, I'll start with citizens' comments. Do we have anyone signed up for citizens' comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Got a couple of people signed up. First, we have Marie Wonderlick.
Good afternoon, Ms. Marie. Would you please, your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly. My name is Marie Wonderlick. I'm Regent of the Zephyr Hills Daughters of the American Revolution Ecobuck Sassa Chapter. The Florida Department of State has opened up a short window for nonprofit organizations to apply for a grant celebrating America's 250th birthday. The Daughters of the American Revolution would like to take advantage of this grant, and we would like to focus this on Veterans Memorial Park in Zephyr Hills. The Ecobuck Sassa Chapter would like to facilitate a permanent construction of a permanent masonry burning pit for retirement of U. S. flags. Currently, there exists no venue open to the public for them to witness such a ceremony, partake in such a ceremony by providing their flags and educating the children about the U. S. flag, not only why we raise it, why we salute it, why we pledge to it, but why we burn it. This is a wonderful opportunity for the city to take part in. In this grant, we would also like to propose eight benches, one for each branch of the armed forces. And these eight branches would intersect with the existing connection path that's currently in that 13-acre park. We would like to have signage educating the public on not only the Declaration of Independence, but revolutionary period events, whether it would be the Liberty Tree, the different battles that took place, but an educational experience, but devoted to the history of our veterans' service, veterans from Revolutionary War period to the current period. We would also like to plant the Liberty Tree and have signage for the Liberty Tree. I've taken the... Well, I've just taken the ability here to write up a few notes, a proposal. I know that I've been meeting with city employees over the past year about the America 250 semi-quintennial that is coming up. I know you want to be involved in it, you want to celebrate it, and this is our opportunity to get some funding for it, and I think it's a perfect way for honoring all our veterans. This park will be used by all organizations that are patriotic, that are civic, like the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the VFW, the Daughters of the American Revolution, everyone who is entitled to or authorized by the flag code to surrender and burn American flags according to the flag code. Thank you very much.
Well, I think that's a great idea. Who's helping you with the grant?
With nobody so far. I'm doing the best I can, looking at a lot of videos.
Billy, do we have anyone that we could recommend that could maybe be able to guide them? Just wondering.
Yeah, we can have conversations.
Maybe give her some...
The grant window closes August the 6th. It just opened up last Thursday, and they're closing it on the 6th. So my window of opportunity is, I've made a lot of phone calls to try to get some assistance, having and looked at examples of grants that had been priorly written and what you'd need. I know I will need a letter from the city saying you would authorize such a thing because that's public land.
Right, yeah, I think that's, that's the key tonight. The reason the presentation was added was because of the deadline, is prior to the next council meeting, and the request that the city give permission to, to, I guess, grant the DAR, the opportunity to install the benches and the burn pit, should they receive it.
What I'm looking for is you're supporting us in applying for the grant because you would allow it to be installed at the veterans' park.
Right, yes, ma'am.
Because I can't go forward without that.
Correct.
So, Ms. Wonderlick, good to see you. I just wanted to let you know that perhaps we can meet with... I know that our CRA director has just presented a plan for our parks, and we want to be sure that whatever we do is something that works with that. And so perhaps we can help you develop, I can help you develop kind of a sketch and then maybe a budget. Because, do you have any idea what kind of, what kind of grants, how much money are people asking for?
I was proposing to ask for $40,000.
Okay.
The bench, eight benches, which I have a picture of what the proposed to look like, were about $1,500 apiece because you have to pay for the different letters. So I stuck to USN, USAF, all the initials, but when I got to the American Revolution, I blew the budget there.
Well, well, I was going to say that currently out there are curvilinear concrete benches. So whatever we would do, if we, you know, we would kind of, kind of recreate that architecturally.
And I can appreciate that, but I was just trying to pull, pull it off, off the window of opportunity that I had, and I had to estimate some kind of a budget. The budget on the construction of a masonry or fire brick, fire pit, was anywhere from $4,000 to $15,000.
Okay.
These are the numbers I'm working with. $40,000 is my target.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I think that, I would, I would say we support it, and I would also recommend that maybe you sit down with Gail Hamilton and then our Public Works Director, Shane, to make sure that it fits in with what we're doing, and they can help guide you with the benches and things. And then they can probably help you with wording, you know, working on the grant as well.
That's great.
Who do we have on staff that typically does the grant applications?
Depends on the grant. Airport, they do a lot of that themselves. Jessica kind of is...
This is with the Cultural and Arts Council of Florida.
Yeah, Jessica's the point person on a lot of it. But as far as the writing, it really depends on what the grant is. We've utilized consultants to write them for us, just whoever has the most knowledge.
Right. And I think, I know that, the reason I know my daughter, she's, she did that for a while, grant writing. Now she does grants for nonprofits, and it's very critical, the way that they're written.
Yes.
Is real critical.
Yes.
Because you could have the best project, but if it isn't presented right. So I'm going to reach out to my daughter, and I'll get from you the criteria or the link to the grant, and I'll just let her take a look at it.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's on, it's on Florida State Department.
I think we need a...
Move to approve?
I just want to...
I discuss with Ricardo.
I just wanted to say that I think this is a great idea. I know this last year, we had a burning right here that I was not comfortable with and didn't feel good about, and they, they want to be able to burn flags too. And there's so many, so many of our organizations that do. So I think this is a great thing, especially when we're trying to build up that park out there.
Right.
And really utilize it for things that are, that honor the veterans.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea.
I was out there for a, I guess it was somebody who was going from captain to colonel. They had a ceremony out there, and there was really no place to do it except stand in the middle of the sidewalk. And about a year ago, I had mentioned that we should do something in the veterans' park that all the branches of the service, all the different service organizations, like American Legion, W and all of them be involved in having some sort of a presence out there would be, and this is a good, a great first step, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a motion second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Ricardo's got my contact information. Jody has my contact information. Mr. Smith, I look forward to it. I can send you any information you need, but I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for coming. Ricardo, anyone else signed up to speak? Citizens' comments?
Yes, Mr. President. I have Michael Cooper.
If you would state your, good evening, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Michael Cooper, 392-393rd Avenue, Zephyr Hill, Florida, across from Veterans Park.
Okay.
Noticed a lot of kids over there riding their motorcycles, ATVs, golf carts over there in the park. You call the law, they don't do nothing. They come around, they can't ride them, ride them in the grass, take them home. One guy was over on an enduro. He literally told him, "Take it." He rode it down the road. They redid the pavement. Next to your gentleman over there, they had him come and resurface it. Had a guy decide he wanted to trim some trees in the yard, so he went through the park, over the new pavement, took his fence down, cut the tree up, and then put his fence back up and drove right back over the pavement, did damage to the pavement. They're using, using it as a road. Even your city employees of the park drive on it like it's a road. It's not a road. It's a track for us to walk on. I walk it every day. My wife walks it. She's a veteran. We both go over there, and we're proud of it. We wish there was more of it, more to it. I don't know why they don't bring the stuff from over there from over at Solerish over to there and make it more for the veterans, because right now, as far as I'm sure, it's not. It's got that one little tiny thing over there with about four blocks, I think, it are bricks, with people's names on it, and a little, little pillar thing. There's no bathrooms, no water, no tables. There's a little fountain for dogs. People take a boulder and sit there for their dogs because people walk their dogs over there. But you have the people driving in the park all the time, and you call the cops. They, sometimes they show up, a lot of times they don't. So I called the city manager complaints several times. He talked to them. When they do come out and catch them, they don't do nothing to them. They just let them go. I don't understand it. How are they going to learn not to do this? When we first moved there, there was a guy over there literally shooting rooster tails in his car. I said, "That's a park." So I went over and told him, "You're not going nowhere. The cops get here." I think I'll find him 25 bucks. It's a park. There are signs y'all put up, "No motorized vehicles." Evidently, nobody can read. They're there, they just don't read them. He drives through the park over there. If they're not going to use the hills no more, why don't they level them down? That'll stop some of it. There was a guy on his truck, driving his truck over them hills the other day. Called the cops. He's gone before they get there. Notice, I noticed the other day, the trucks, garbage trucks go down, picking up the garbage. The trees need to be trimmed up. They're hitting the trees with the top of the truck, and then some of the limbs are hanging down. So when they lift the garbage cans, it's hitting the garbage can in the arm of the truck. So it's, it's doing damage. You hear it squeaking and squalling because they're not greasing them like they need to be greased, but it's just destructive. They leave pieces of stuff in the road. Next thing I don't understand, we have a garbage can. We put it out. We don't overfill it. It said it lived most bus clothes. Yet, most people on our side don't even take their garbage cans and just leave them out there beside the road. We bring ours in. We don't overfill it. But you see people sacked up this high. There's one of them's got a broke lid because it can't, the lid stays open. When he grabs it, it squishes the lid. So it's destroying, it's tearing the garbage can up.
Okay.
I don't understand why they, they should tell them, if you're not, if you go overfill them, "We're not going to pick them up and chill you. Fix it. Don't overfill your garbage can." But why do they want to leave them outside the road? I don't understand. It's not like they haven't got wheels rolling. It's not that complicated. Next thing, I hate to say it, but I asked Mr., trying to think of his name, Code Enforcement? Bacon, yeah, Joe Bacon. I said, "I would like you to canopy, put out," because we've been for 21 years in Zephyr Hills. Well, there's direct sunlight beating on our vehicles. Well, my, my truck's in the driveway, so there's only one tree there, so I parked hers over here. Well, it was nice in the car when we first bought it. Now it ain't. The sun has already baked it to pieces. So I asked him, I said, "Can I get a canopy put in my front yard?" He said, "Yes." I said, "It'd be 12, 20, 20 feet long, 12 feet wide." He said, "Yeah." Well, I put the poles up. Nobody said nothing. I put the canopy up. Nobody said nothing. Okay, it came with six anchors, three-foot anchors. I put six more three-foot anchors on it, plus straps, strapped it to the ground. They were all the way screwed into the ground, three foot.
All right.
And then he comes on and tells me, he says, "It's going to blow away." I can't have it after he told me I could get it. So I took it down. I didn't want to be in trouble. I didn't want to be fined.
I didn't think he could have those canopies in the front yard. You're not supposed to, no.
Well, he's the one telling me I could have it, and then I said, "What about the metal ones?" "You can't have that neither. Let's just build onto your house." I said, "They need to change something." I had no back, I had no side yard. I got four foot on each side of my house. The only way I could get a shed, I had it by one of those little cheap plastic ones they have built back, or put together back there. I had no way to get a decent-sized shed back. My Jeep, if we weren't paying it, we've got to fold the mirrors in to drive it back there and unfold the mirrors when you come back out. So the only thing it's got to do is sit there. It's destroying our vehicle. If I can't put one there, can I put one over, over on the other side of my driveway?
Well, you would have to talk to Code Enforcement.
Well, I wanted to bring, they said to bring it up here because then maybe y'all could help them work it out because they're going around telling people, "Yeah, you can't have these now."
Okay, hey, Billy, can we have someone look into this? We'll have someone look into it, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, because I know there'd be, a lot of people have been taking them down, but when you were told you could have it, you see they blow away.
Okay, thank you.
If it blew away, I'd buy a new one.
All right.
Mr. Cooper, if you can provide me with a contact number, I can provide it to Code Enforcement.
Can you come and give us your phone number?
Sure.
So we can... Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else signed up?
I've got one more, Mr. President.
No problem.
Vicki Wiggins.
Hey, Ms. Vicki, your name and address for the record.
It's been a bit since I've been back. So Vicki Wiggins, 38550 Fifth Avenue, Zephyr Hills. Yeah, it's been a bit since I've been here. I've been running around the last week of the, of the, each month. I wanted to let you know we have a ribbon cutting this Thursday at 11:30 at the Chamber Office. Fluffy puffy grooming. Say that three times fast. They're coming, and they, they work out of their homes, so they're going to come and do the ribbon cutting at our office on Thursday from 11:00 to 12:00 with ribbon cutting actually at 11:30. So you're welcome to come and join us for a few minutes. And then I placed an invitation to our birthday party. So we're throwing ourselves a birthday party. We're one-year-old as of Friday with our new East Pasco Chamber name and, and all the things that go along with that. And so it's an open house format from 9:00 to 3:00 on Friday, both offices. If you're not in Zephyr Hills, you can come to the Dade City Office. We'll do cakes and cupcakes and snacks, and we're going to do some giveaways and drawings throughout the day. So please feel free to come in and say hello and happy birthday, and put your name in for a little giveaway. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Vicki. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else, sir?
I have no more signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda to the city council? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the mayor.
Absolutely, your coach can come to you. I'm sure he's been instrumental for you. So come on up with me and, aye. Agalera. Exciting today, pretty exciting. So if you guys don't know this young man, he's a pretty special guy, and I'm going to read to you some of the great things that he's been able to accomplish this last year. Whereas Malachi Woodard, a senior at Zephyr Hills High School, began his journey in powerlifting as a freshman and has since demonstrated extraordinary dedication, discipline, and perseverance in the sport. And whereas Malachi earned his first state title as a sophomore and concluded his high school career with another state championship, solidifying his legacy as one of Florida's premier high school weightlifters. And whereas during the 2025 Class 2A Boys Weightlifting Olympic Snatch Competition, Malachi Woodard broke the state, I'm saying that right? Okay, phew. Broke the state record in the 154-pound division by lifting an astounding 240 pounds, surpassing previous record of 230 pounds. And whereas Malachi's achievements have not only brought pride to Zephyr Hills High School, but have also earned him a scholarship to Lynwood University in Missouri, where he will continue his academic and athletic pursuits. And whereas, surrounded by his family, teammates, and coaches, including Coach James Agalera, Malachi signed his National Letter of Intent in the ZHS Weight Room, expressing heartfelt gratitude to those who supported his journey and helped him realize his dreams. And whereas, Malachi's story is one of resilience and inspiration as he found his person, purpose, and passion in the weight room, using it as a source of motivation and strength to achieve greatness. And whereas, standing five foot, five foot three inches tall, I love it, me too. So if I took those off. Malachi has proven that determination and heart, and heart outweigh any physical limitation, and he now aspires to become a strength and conditioning coach to train future professional athletes. Now therefore, I, Melanie Bar-Mont, the mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby recognize and commend Malachi Woodard, 2025 state champion, state champion, and record-breaking weightlifter. How exciting. Yeah. Let's come this way and get a picture. Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Hey, Mr. President, if I can just add, I had the pleasure of meeting Malachi on the soccer field. He probably doesn't even remember. He went to school with my youngest son. So he played soccer as well. He also, I'd see him at 6:00 in the morning at cross-country meets, taking pictures of the team. So great kid, great representation of Zephyr Hills and Zephyr Hills High. And his coach, I had the pleasure of growing up with him, going to Zephyr Hills High with him. So that shirt probably hides a little bit, but he used to be a pretty big weightlifter as well in school. So, James, thank you for what you do for the, for the team and the youth of Zephyr Hills High.
All right, moving forward, and I forgot to say in the beginning of the meeting, if anyone, if everyone could silence their phones for the meeting, that would be appreciated. We have 12 consent agenda items. We can pass them all at once, or we can pull any for discussion. I'll turn it over to the council.
I would like to pull 110.
You would like to pull 110?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to pull, there with me just a moment. The one for R and M Service.
RCM is 1.6.
1.6?
RCM is 1.6.
No, R and M, so it's actually 1.8, please.
You want to pull 1.8 and 1.10. Any others? Seeing none, I'll enter, I'll have, I'll take a motion for the other 10.
Mr. President, I move we approve the remaining items.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and now we'll go to 1.8 for discussion.
So I just have a quick question. One of the things that we talked about a while back was making sure that we are checking references for companies with whom we've not done business before. So there were a couple of folks for, for either continuing contracts or for piggybacking. One was R and M Service Solutions, another was AC Schultes, and another one was Bayer Utility Consultants, I think it was, or Engineering Consultants. I talked with Mr. Poe regarding the engineering consultant, but wanted to ask the Public Works Director or someone from Utilities if we've used these folks in the past or if, whether or not we've checked their references.
Our R and M Services, we've utilized for, I believe, the entire time I've been here, for hydrant maintenance.
For, for what?
For hydrant maintenance, which is what we're continuing with.
Good. All right, well, that's, that's, if you're, if you're happy with them, and we competitively price them, or how do we know that we're getting the best, the best bang for our buck?
Are you talking about R and M?
Yes.
Yeah, I know the utility department uses them, and we also use them for generators and stormwater pumps. They kind of, their expertise is pumping control panels, that type of thing. And we just, Public Works, we piggyback off the utilities bid.
Shane, could you give your name and address for the record?
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
So, yes, we've used R and M before, and they've been a great contractor for us. If that'll answer your question on that one.
And as far as pricing, we're able to piggyback because they've competed, they were competitively, they won the competitive bid in Longboat Key. So Longboat Key made the determination that they were the, I guess, most responsive, best bang for the buck, so to, so to speak, and so we were able to piggyback that way.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further?
All right, no. All right, no, should we go ahead and pass this one or do them both?
Yep. Mr. President, I'd ask that we take a vote now.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a motion on item 1.8.
So I'll move to approve 1.8 now?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And 1.10.
I pulled 1.10 because it's, we are asking to add another engineer to our list of engineers. And this would be for Public Works. And I had talked with the city manager about this. I just wondered how many, number one, this was a, this, we piggyback DOT. So DOT said it, it had, I wanted to know what kind of hourly rate we have with other Public Works engineers. And I was curious, this said it had a limit up to $5 million. And it also talked about using it for bridges. And so what, what would specifically we use this engineer for in terms of, I mean, DOT has a wide expanse of Public Works-type jobs? And what would, what would be the intent for this?
Once again, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. That's a good question. The Bayer United, the firm, they specialize in Public Works-type projects. They're a smaller firm that the city manager and I have discussed in the past of sidewalk jobs and road projects and that type of thing, trying to get another firm on board that doesn't have all of the overhead that some of the big firms have. So we would just use them for, yes, a sidewalk project's a good example. The engineer, I know him personally through American Public Works Association. He's got a public sector background and a private sector background. So he's very well-versed in design and project management, and it's all, it's a smaller firm.
What, how different were you at, did you have the ability to look at some hourly rates?
I was not in the opportunity to pull the other contract.
Do you have an idea, if you use Kimley Horn for something, what is their hourly rate between people compared to this? This was like $250 an hour.
I don't have that information in front of me, but I know they're, they vary. Bigger the firm, the, the more overhead, the higher the hourly rate.
Because, you know, this seems to me that we're, we're talking about trying to reduce some engineering costs and consulting costs. Yet, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we added, I don't know how many firms to our, be able to go to them immediately, which is a good thing in terms of, you know, implementing projects and getting them up, up the, you know, getting them moving quicker. But I just wonder, how many consultants do we have and engineers are we, do we use through these different companies?
Well, the previous approved contracts were for construction managers and contractors. This is.
Well, I know what the difference is. I'm just saying, we have talked about relying less on consultants, yet we keep adding different types. So are we going to drop a consultant? I know we have Corneliusson. Do we use him at all? He's not in state. You know, I just think we're, it, it just seems to me that we're adding and adding and adding and, and not looking at doing more in-house or how do you do it?
Mr. Poe, would you like for me to, okay.
Yeah, so.
I have this exact same discussion.
Yeah, so we do, we do, it is to add another consultant. All the consultants, Craig Corneliusson, Kimley Horn, BGE, in this case with Bayer. They're all kind of as needed, so there's not a, a ongoing cost. It's only if we utilize them. We utilize Kimley Horn and Craig to look at plans, to do review of stormwater transportation studies and ports that come in. Those are costs that are passed back to the developer. So for instance, Gagney Development is coming in. We push, we, we get in agreement with either Kimley Horn and/or Craig. We, they sign that agreement and they review the plans, give us the report, and then that bill gets pushed to the developer. So there's not a cost to the city. If Bayer could be utilized in that same way, or they could design things for us, you know, as needed.
And Steve, if you would, if we liken it to specialists in medicine. So for example, my, my experience is, is medical office, not all architects can do medical office, not all civil engineers can do sidewalks or, or drainage or things like that. And so I'm, I'm thinking that, and that's why I ask about Bayer, had we worked with them before? And the fact that you've met him before and that you've seen work that he's done and that you have, you know that he's doing continuing education, that's kind of a good sign, and you can't, you can't know until you give him a try.
Right. And our intent was to try to be more cost-effective, more tools in the toolbox.
Right. And, and you know, I've talked during our budget workshop about if we had an in-house engineer, that in-house engineer could review plans like we do and we'd get reimbursed, the city would get reimbursed for it rather, you know, for the work. This is the kind of thing, I think, I, I don't know that a sidewalk would be that difficult for an engineer to design. So, you know, I just go back to, I think we need to start looking at doing more of this in-house.
And, and I agree to, the other thing I'll say is I guess this gives us one more person to, to try and get pricing off of, right? I mean, because, because when you had something, I mean, you just wouldn't say, oh, we're going to use this guy. You might get a couple of different prices off these guys. This guy might be less busy than another person and be able to get to it quicker. So there's an advantage, but there's also a big advantage to having somebody that could do it in-house, too.
Right. And some of these consultants, you can't really get prices. You have to base it on their experience. So.
Once we have them in-house, then we can ask them for the, the prices. It's when we're doing this selection, it has to be RFP or, excuse me, RFQ. But an example of, of this stormwater assessment fee that we brought before council in the near future, we reached out to two engineering firms, received their prices, and then reached out to a, a third firm. And the third firm, it was $260,000 less than the other, you know, the first firm, firm that bid it. So I think there's, there is some benefit to having more than one that's, that's on the books and, and sitting and ready because we can have those conversations with them and see where they are price-wise.
Now, now, is that right? Am I right in saying like if you had these people already, already voted in as a preferred engineer or whatever, you could price between all of them, right?
Yeah, that's exactly what we just did with the, the stormwater fee.
But, but it's very important that you have somebody who knows how to write an RFP for the specific, so that you're really comparing apples to apples. Because a lot of assumptions are made when you do a proposal. And that's why they have hourly rates, because they anticipate that at some point they'll run out of hours or something. So if you have an, you know, not to exceed and you, and you give them a finite scope of work, it's much more cost-effective. And someone who's a civil engineer might be better at that than, you know, one of our existing staff, just saying.
Yep, the agreements that we, that we sign, the task orders we sign with, for instance, Kimley Horn, they all have a, obviously they have the hourly rate attached to it, but they also have a not to exceed price as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of this item.
Approval of, of, for.
1.10.
Yeah.
Right, for, for another engineer in our toolbox. And, and I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
One nay. Motion passes four to one.
I would just like to point out, too, on the consent agenda, item 112, I noticed that, for, we approved the, this already for the approval of the Neptune meters, that the Consumer Price Index has gone up and we're now being charged tariff fees. So that's an interesting development that I think that we need to watch out for.
Well, and you know, they actually even included a long list of CPI and, and very specific, like cost of groceries, cost of this, cost of that, and then they did an average, and that's how they came up with their increase. So it's not an actual increase to them today. That's the thing, it's a little concerning.
I'm more concerned about the tariff fees that we're being charged now.
All right, thank you. All righty, we will move forward with business item number two, 2.1.
Thank you, Mr. President. Assistant City Attorney Matt Newton. Item 2.1 is a second reading of ordinance number 1503-25 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, annexing approximately 13.72 acres, more or less, into the corporate limits of the city described as parcel number 18-26-22-0010-09300-0000, Zephyr Hills, Florida, in accordance with Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
All right, and I'm seeing this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing.
So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this?
I don't have anyone signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll turn it over for discussion to the council. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this ordinance number 1503-25 on its second reading. This is something that's been before us twice already, previous.
And I'll, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.2.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt Newton, Assistant City Attorney. Item 2.2 is a second reading of ordinance number 1504-25 in ordinance of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, proposing an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, changing from county IL to city IN, industrial, and the zoning designation from county AC to city LI, light industrial, for approximately 13.72 acres of real property located west of Chancy Road and east of the Zephyr Hills Airport and Zephyr Hills municipal boundary, and having parcel ID number 18-26-22-0010-09300-0000, providing, providing for repealer, conflict severability, and an effective date. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up for this, Ricardo?
No, Mr. President, I have no one signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to item 2.2 on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll turn it over to council.
Mr. President, again, this has been before us a couple of times. This is a partner ordinance with the previous one and addresses the rezoning and flu for this prop, this same parcel. So I'd like to move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no nays, motion passes unanimously. I see a number one underneath there. Is that, are we supposed to do that before the 2.3? Okay.
No, that's, that's part of the attachments. That's the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. I'll move on to item 2.3.
Item 2.3 is a second reading of ordinance number 1505-25 in ordinance by the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, creating a new section to Chapter 93 of the City of Zephyr Hills Code of Ordinances, Section 93.03, establishing regulations for the keeping, harboring, and maintenance of backyard chickens, providing for applicability, repealer, severability, inclusion in the code, and providing an effective date. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this?
I have no one signed up.
Is there anyone in the, please step up and state your name and address for the record, sir?
The name is Brad Bush, 4925 20th Street. I actually came here, I think, last year, right about the same exact time, asking to have the council look into doing a backyard chickens. As you saw, I guess, all the beginning of this year, we had a lot of big epidemic bird flu. I reviewed everything that you guys had done as far as the chicken ordinance and think it's about as bulletproof as anything can get. Obviously, at the end of the day, someone's always going to try to take advantage of it. But it takes both the welfare of the chicken, plus the individual freedoms of everyone into a full account, along with holding up accountability for people to properly take care of said chickens. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm happy to see that it's gotten up to this point and that I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'll entertain, I'll turn it over to council.
And, and, Mr. President, if I could, I appreciate you coming out and talking. Because we're on, we, we, the staff looked at it very hard. We reviewed it. And just, I was looking today and Tarpon Springs, Dunedin, Safety Harbor, St. Pete, Lakeland, Tampa, Hyde Park in Tampa, all allow chickens. So I don't view it as, as a bad thing.
It's renegade.
It's, it's something that is, is occurring, and I, I think we should jump on board, and I think that's why we did it. So I would move to approve.
Well, if I could, I, I do, there's some additional discussion, and that is that, I don't know if I missed it the last time, but the chicken, the backyard chicken application needs some work. Maybe we could look at, because I looked at those two, their applications were a little better and specifically, and, and I've had discussions now with people who are backyard chicken, or actually hens. So we use this phrase chicken, but what we're really talking about is hens. And, and so in, in the application, it talks about what districts, and that's not filled in. And so if there is, for example, if it's the CRA's intent to not allow chickens in the CRA, then that needs to be defined in the application right now. The way the application is, it's just highlighted in left blank.
Well, that would have to come before council first, correct?
Well, the application we're approving in this ordinance, and it's not ready, in my opinion.
What we'll do with the application is we'll fill in the districts that are in the ordinance, which are.
It's ER, R1, R2, and R3.
Yes.
It's citywide.
So then there's no reason to have that, that phrase, and that's what I'm saying. There's, that doesn't belong in the application.
I would, I would disagree with that. It does need to be in there because we're saying it's those three districts.
Four.
Or four districts. Sorry, trying to get to the.
Okay.
Got the wrong label, but that was a, that's an oversight. It does need to be added in there. So that will be corrected, but it needs to have the districts of ER, R1, R2, and R3. And that'll be in the application. That does need to be corrected.
Okay, perfect.
And the idea of the application was really just so that individuals who have chickens sign for it. We have it on record that they signed with the rules, so that, because it's going to happen. We're going to end up in court over these, right, through code enforcement. We can produce the paper that says, you sign for the rules, so they are.
So the other thing is that, you know, there's a blanket statement, no roosters allowed at any time. The thing is, is that sometimes people breed the chickens, and it's not just used for egg laying. So is there any further discussion as, and, and I know this is kind of late, but I missed the last meeting. Or I was here for the last regular council meeting, and I think maybe this was in there, but I, I didn't see it, and I apologize. But these questions have been coming up. So we talk about no roosters if people are raising the roosters, if people are raising chickens, so the hatchling is a rooster. You see what I'm saying? Is that it's almost like we should say, instead of saying no roosters, we say hens only, instead of no roosters. I don't know if that makes sense.
Our thought is, is we don't want roosters, right? And so if, if there is a hatchling that is a rooster, they get rid of it.
Okay.
But, but about the hatchlings, I don't think we were advocating a operation where somebody raises chickens. They were, they were there for egg production, right?
But is that clear in the?
To me, it was. Let me see, let me look at it again. Because I just, it wasn't like you were going to raise pullets or anything like that.
Okay. What, what are you saying?
I said our intent was strictly for them to have chickens so they can have eggs. There was no going to be raising chickens or any of that other stuff.
Yeah, a max of five, five at, at any time.
Okay.
That was our intent. Whether it specifies that or not, I don't know, but.
Well, and that's why I'm just saying is that we want to make sure that the back, that the application is, I think that, I think that the ordinance is good, and it's general enough that it allows us control over some of the details, but the application still needs a little work, in my opinion.
Well, I thought it looked pretty good, personally, when I would.
Well, I think where it says no rooster shall be allowed on any property within the city at any time is, kind of covers, for our angle. Now, the ones that are already running around, they're wild. I don't know what we do about those, but.
All right, well, we have a motion and then I'll second, because I don't have any further discussion.
Well, right. Well, and, and the good discussion is when we do an ordinance like this, sometimes we do have to come back and revisit it because we figure something's been missed. We understand it's not just a static document.
It may not be perfect, and if the code enforcement officer comes back and says, hey, I need help with this, and we'll fix it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a mo, if there's no more discussion, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
One nay. That, motion passes four to one. Thank you. 2.4.
That's it, thank you.
Assistant City Attorney Matt Newton. Item 2.4 is the 2025 Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Item two point four is the twenty twenty-five Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, resolution number eight five nine two five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, adopting the Pasco County Comprehensive Emergency Management Council's requested to approval, to approve the adopted Pasco simp. Florida State Statute provides that municipalities without an emergency management program must adopt their respective counties' plan in order for Pasco County to be eligible to receive federal mitigation funds. There is no fiscal impact, and with that, staff recommends approval of the Pasco County twenty twenty-five Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
This is not a public hearing, so is there any more discussion, or I'll extend a motion?
I'll move. Go ahead. No, if you've got something.
I, I move we approve resolution number eight five nine dash twenty five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Planning Director's Report. Todd, how you doing?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Todd Vanderburg, Planning Director. We'll get the remote here, but while we're preparing for that, this is the second time we're bringing the tree landscape ordinance before you. I'll just advise you that this isn't an item.
Thank you, sir.
This isn't an item we're going to take any formal action on this evening. We've been working, staff has been working on the tree ordinance landscaping section of our land development code. And then you'll have, so we're going to have some discussion this evening about it, kind of highlighted a few items that we'll have a brief discussion on, and then we'll finalize a draft ordinance, and then we'll, so you'll have two more opportunities when the ordinance comes back to you for final comments. So we've got a, tonight, and two, at least two additional meetings to, to finalize any comments that you might have. Our tree regulations, you know, are dated. Council had brought up some concerns and comments, so staff thought that we'd take a look at the, the ordinance, tree ordinance and landscape ordinance that's in our land development code that helps us understand and how to regulate tree removal in our landscape ordinance. So we're looking at this internally. And we, we talked about, I, I won't highlight, we've talked previously about some of the, the issues and concerns that have been brought by the mayor and council to staff, so we've been looking at those. We've looked at other communities, and we've looked at what Pasco County's doing, and, and also Safety Harbor. We've looked a lot at their ordinance, and they've gone through several reiterations of their tree ordinance landscaping code, so. So what I've done is, I've just identified some points that I thought we'd have some discussion, so we're, we're going to go through those. I'll, I'll take any comments that you have when we bring these up, and then, again, if you, if you have additional comments and concerns after tonight, if you want to just call me or email me, I'm happy to take those comments whenever you want. So the points to consider, right now, the first one I had, a city code does not require a permit for tree removal on city residential lots. You know, so we've talked about that a little bit. City Safety Harbor does. We, we haven't. We, we do have tree removal permits, we're non-residential. And one, one point that came up on that was, is with the latest stance on the code with Florida statutes, I talked with Matt this afternoon, and there is language in Florida statutes, and the attorney can talk about this some more, but there are some limitations on, on that. If, my understanding is, if, if the, on a residential lot, if an applicant comes to us, provides a tree removal permit, and they've got an arborist report that states that the, it's damaged, diseased, then my understanding is, under the state law, now that we can't require or allow, have a tree removal permit for an instance like that.
If I may, Matt Newton, Assistant City Attorney. Back in twenty nineteen, the Florida Legislature provided kind of a cheat code to people. If it's a residentially, and originally, it just said residentially zoned lot, that if you met certain steps, you wouldn't have to pull a permit to remove a dam, a, a dangerous tree. That went to litigation, because it was pretty ambiguous. That was a case called Vickery versus Pensacola, up in the first DCA. Before that could go to the Florida Supreme Court, the, the legislature came and narrowed it, made it very specific that it was single-family lots, put specific thresholds that people had to satisfy to meet this cheat code, and that at that point, there wouldn't be any requirements to apply for a permit if it's a dangerous tree, it meets certain specifications specified by the ISA. I talked to City Attorney Maggard on the way here. I am very confident the two of us can make sure that this ordinance is in harmony with that. There's not a field preemption or anything like that. It's just a method for people who may choose to just get an arborist report rather than go through a formalized process.
If I may, yeah, I, I don't think the intent is to charge somebody a, a permit to charge a permit. I think if we were doing that, we want to make sure they're not cutting down a live oak or, you know, a good tree.
Right.
So I think that if they have an exempt dead or diseased tree, yeah, that easily could be exempt from a fee.
Yeah, that, that, we understand that, and that's what we're being directed now to do. So the question would be, is, in instances beyond that, if it's a healthy live oak tree, yeah, if there would be a permit, there'd be a fee for that.
Mr. President. And, and you know, unfortunately, some of the insurance companies now will come out and say, that tree, we're not going to insure you if that, which I've experienced that.
Yeah, it's terrible, because, I mean, I, I guess the older I get, the more I'm, more, I got to be a tree hugger somewhat. I just hate seeing a fifty-year-old live oak being cut down, you know? And, and it happened during the storm, but it's hard, I mean, I don't know how you handle that, if an insurance company says, hey, I got to get rid of it. I mean.
That's a great point.
So Assistant City Attorney Matt Newton, if, if you have a situation where a insurance company is asking you to remove a healthy tree, you would have to go through the permitting process. And at that point, you know, it is, it is the city's discretion on whether or not to grant that permit. And so unfortunately, you have kind of the free market bumping against the, the public interest at that point. And, you know, if, if it's the, the will of the city to not grant that per, permit, may need to find a new insurance company, which, you know, in the state of Florida.
Which is pretty tough.
It's pretty tough. So that's a tough position to be in. I mean, that may be something staff may want to think about as we craft this ordinance.
Could they bring that to the council as well, to, if, if we wanted to bypass that for them? If they have to do it, if they can't get homeowners insurance, then something has to be done.
Yeah, there may be some kind of, of, of appellate process we could build in and say, you know, this isn't meeting staff's standards, but we would like a variance, or we may like some other relief that the, that the council.
Because we don't want to cut down good trees, but I mean.
Absolutely. We can certainly look at that topic. It's a good point raised, yeah.
Can, can I ask a couple of questions? To, just to circle back to the one where if it's a diseased tree, are we allowed to have a mechanism that they would tell us that it's a diseased tree that's coming down?
An arborist report.
Right, before they pull it down, or they just can just take it down, and then if we happen to see it, then they have to give us the report? That's my.
Assistant City, Assistant City Attorney Matt Newton, unfortunately, it just requires that the person possess a document. They're not legally required to present the document. I've run into fact patterns in the past where you would have people clear-cutting fields and saying, you know, I have a document, and then that would become kind of an affirmative defense in a code enforcement setting. There are examples, before this was amended, if you, if you look at Tampa Bay Times articles, there was a certain developer in the city of Tampa, before things were clarified, that just clear-cut a field and said we were preempted. I think the legislature did a really good job in twenty twenty-two, making it very, very clear what the intent of it is. You know, there are, there, with every statute, there is an opportunity for people to take advantage of it.
Right.
You know, we haven't seen any cases coming up where this particular amended statute from twenty twenty-two has been abused yet, but we're keeping our eye out for it. But unfortunately, we, we cannot require somebody who's using the statute to present it and ask permission first.
Okay, and my second part of the question is, so if, if it's an insurance that's making you do this, you know, is there a way that we could say that, yes, they have to have a permit, pay for, I, I do think they need to pay for a permit fee. That's just me personally. But then they would replace the tree? Could that be, if they, if it's one that had to be removed, could they, that be one of the things that we ask for, is to replace with a different type of tree that's not going to impede over the house?
Would it be allowed to do that?
Presumably, in that example, the tree would be healthy, so that would fall outside the scope of the preemption. So we can use our home rule powers to be creative.
And that's what I'm wondering in the ordinance, is there something? Because, yeah, you are going to have, especially after this last hurricane, where there's, where I think when we go to renew our insurance policies, a lot of us are going to come up with that, that they're going to make us take down trees. But I do think if, if we have to take down it, just like we do with a, a construction company or a developer, you have to put a tree back, right? I think that needs to be in there if possible.
And part of this, you see up there, you know, the, the tree canopy in Zephyr Hills is diminishing. A lot of the trees are very old, especially within the core. And I know Gail's working on a tree replanting program, so in combination with that, and, you know, Safety Harbor, we looked at pretty seriously, they, they do require tree removal fee. It's twenty-five dollars for residential. Anything non-residential, or beyond the single families, a hundred dollars, so it's an increased fee for the non-residential. But, yeah, just looking for a little clarification if, if council supports a, a residential tree removal fee.
I think it, it opens the ability for us to look at things, you know? It gives us that mechanism to be able to look at it closer, instead of somebody just deciding they just want to take it down.
Yeah.
Mr. President. Sorry, one other thing, and that is, often, these arborists work for the tree removal company.
That's the problem.
And they're, and they're not really motivated to tell you if the tree is healthy or not. I learned that from experience at one of our rental properties, but the insurance company talked to us about one, and, and we negotiated with them, and they allowed us to remove some limbs, and I got an arborist, I actually hired an arborist that's, that was, that would rule in our, in, in our favor, and made, you know, drilled into the tree, and, you know, was able to prove that it was, it was healthy. So the, the other thing is that, is that it, it also provides a mechanism for the building department to check the licensure of a tree removal company. If we require them to have a permit, even if it's only thirty-five dollars, or whatever it's going to cost our staff to double, to, to look at, to look into that, but ensuring that those folks have liability insurance and they're licensed, that's a good reason.
Yes, make a note of that.
Working without that.
And if we do the fee, we don't want, like, Safety Harbor had in their, in their ordinance, I, I wouldn't suggest we have it in the ordinance, we have a fee schedule that's separate from the ordinance, and we just put it in there, but that'll come back for you, but just wanted to run that by you. Some other points to consider, council with the quantity, quantity of trees being removed for development, you know, that, that's been a big topic. So we have a table on tree removal guidelines, that's section seven oh six oh four. This table provides thresholds that look, we require surveys. Surveyor goes out, they survey the trees, and they provide the number of trees per acre. And let me just quick jump to that slide. Here's a slide. So there, there's these different tiers, and you see in left-hand column, the average number of trees per acre, six inches is what we currently require for, to be surveyed on the caliper. And then you can see a varying level, a percentage of trees that are allowed to be removed. And of course, the lower, lower, based on the lower number of trees per acre. So that, that's been in our code. You know, we've had some discussions and consideration, maybe it's good to have, leave that table in the, in the code as a deterrent, but we've also had discussions where maybe there could be some additional language added to the section of the code. Right now, it provides my position the opportunity to review on a case-by-case basis, an alternative to what's allowed here on this table. Some, some general points that we've discussed is, you know, maybe it's the quality of the tree versus quantity of trees that we should be taking a strong look at. For example, if you have a, a water oak or a lower oak that has a life expectancy of thirty-five years, and the tree report comes back, we're proposing a tree assessment, and if that tree assessment says it's year twenty-five of thirty years, maybe we look at that differently. Safety Harbor, they, 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 they don't require mitigation for a tree that doesn't assess higher than a three point five on a zero-to-five scale. So I, I don't know, we could propose some language in here that, that, here's a standard, maybe i- if you go ten percent beyond that, staff can approve it, review and approve on a case-by-case administratively, and if it's above ten percent, maybe it comes to council, the different ways we could look at that. But, you know, this certainly, you know, we've got about three, four projects right now that they're not going to meet this table, so.
Yeah, because, you know, an example, so two projects we approved recently in, off of Geiger Road, one on the north side, one on the south side. One, they've already cleared, but, on a weekend, but those were totally tree lots, so you have to come up with some kind of agreement where you can remove trees.
Right.
In order to build anything almost, so.
Oh, and I thought that was one of the criteria of that particular one, is we talked about changing the design to go around certain trees, create islands and things like that? Did that happen?
We didn't get a plan, but the one lot, I mean, I think, in a drive-by situation, it looks like they took more trees than they should.
Well, I think they cleared the, the north side. I, I'm not sure they, to my knowledge, I don't have evidence that they went in and cleared trees that, that are protected against six inch and above. Now, I know on the south side, the larger property, they had damage from Milton, and they, they redid their survey, and they're removing the trees that were damaged from the storm.
But what I was trying to say is, though, in some instances, it's going to be very hard to save all the trees when the whole lot is treeed.
Yeah.
That's my point.
That's where I think we got to add some flexibility, and we'll propose some code on that, probably don't have to figure that out tonight, but.
Save as many as possible.
Yeah, and, and again, I think we want to look at each site independently, and what's best for that site, where we can change the development, maybe on the hospital site, the community gardens get moved, where they want to build a parking lot, they relocate them to an area, maybe where there's some trees, but, you know, you just work on each site on a case-by-case basis to.
Didn't the CRA, we have a, a arborist consultant hired by the CRA.
Yes.
And I wondered if, and, and that's a per hour, I wondered if that would be something where they could help you with some of this assessment. I mean, you're not a tree expert.
Yeah, we're not.
I mean, you're good at a lot of things, but I don't know that.
Yeah, we're not an arborist, and we've talked about, I, I, you'll see at the end, we want to propose or present the proposed draft of the ordinance to one of our landscape architects, I've talked with Kimmy Horn, they have in LA. But, yeah, we've also talked about, yeah, having a, you know, not on every case, but if it's a complex issue with a lot of trees, and there's questions, we want to have access to, just like we do any of our other engineers, to take, take the tree issues as a priority and, and look at that.
Or we can hire an arborist. I would like to have an arborist, honestly, rather than a landscape architect. I mean, because the arborist just deals with trees, that's, that's all they do. So I, I don't, that's, that's my feeling on it.
Todd, is this chart, is this a current, or is this a proposed, or?
Current.
This is a current one, so you're saying we have some projects that already won't meet this?
To a degree, yeah, because they're a hundred percent tree.
Right. And so I think there has to be a case-by-case basis thing, like you said, but, I mean, that, they're well aware of this, and I guess of this chart, right?
Yeah, they are, and they're very aware that, how council feels about tree preservation. So we've asked them to try to work with their site to the best of their ability and maximize tree preservation, and to, to come with us with a plan, and then, yeah, look at each site independently on how we can work with them to preserve. preserve the maximum number of trees.
And I think in the last three projects, a hospital and the two on Geiger, we've included this chart in the developer agreement.
They're aware of it. And and the the hospital site has just gone through rezoning right now. They haven't submitted a plan, but their planners probably do parking, so there's trees going to have to come out. The the other two projects on Geiger Road haven't come through. The one on the south side is getting close. So. Okay.
Thank you.
I think we got some good direction on that. Some other general ideas. Comprehensive, Safety Harbor, they require comprehensive explanation as far as their justification report that gets submitted with the tree survey with an explanation on why those trees can't be preserved, why they need to be removed. I just leave it that. They got some pretty good language that helps submit the justification of why those trees need to be removed. We talked about the higher tree removal fees. There's a higher removal for the non-residential. And it's it's only valid for three months. If you don't do your project, then you got to come back in and reapply. Some new additional new language. City staff would have the authority to withhold the issuance of a tree removal permit application where development approval is required. Tell the site plan approval has been granted. Sometimes people will go in, they try to do removal, clearcutting before they even have approvals. The way that we want to implement this from now on is we have a pre-application meeting initially before the plan even gets designed. So we can address the tree preservation and try to get that addressed before they start their design engineering. Also, some new language. City staff, upon determination that a tree removal permit application is to be denied, we 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 got to state the basis for that. And that that's pretty self-explanatory, I think. There there's some new tree removal replacement ratios that we're proposing. And I have a slide on that, especially for grand trees. The larger the grand tree gets, the larger the replacement value is. We're going to probably keep some of the landscape buffers that we already have. We think those do pretty good, except for the ones along right-of-way. I won't get into that too much, but we'll show you what that is in the ordinance as an exhibit. We're also proposing a a new section in the landscape tree section of our code for open space, a minimum of open space requirement. And we've got some sample language based on the size of a property like we're residential. Certain amount needs to be preserved in open space. And that can be native vegetation, trees, and based on the number of units per development. We'll come back with some language for you on that. Here's another last bullet point there. Right now, it's just a one-year maintenance where you got to take care of your trees for one year. We're proposing, Safety Harbor has it, is two years. I think that'll help us out a little bit just by extending the the maintenance period of of trees and landscape that gets put in on a development.
And I like the open space.
Yeah, yeah, please, I I know I'm running through these a little quick. Just stop me if you want me to don't like it.
So far, so good.
Okay, all right, thank you. There's a new tree removal replacement. Well, we've done this, all right. Next slide. Enforcement. I won't get into details, but Safety Harbor had some very, very good and appropriate language for enforcement that went beyond what we have. So we'll we'll get into that. I was going to, I'll share that with our code enforcement people, our attorneys to to review that language, make sure we're on. There's some language there for written notices or remedial work and stop work orders, which they kind of deal with on a regular basis. But we'd just be adding some additional language that talks about more of the the enforcement side of things. And and there's some specific language about unauthorized tree removal. They they, right now, we have some fines, but Safety Harbor, they fine them at four times the tree removal fee and additional progressive fines dependent to your first, second, third offense that would just ramps it up even higher if they're perpetual removal remover without approvals. Here's the the grand tree removal replacement ratios. Depending on the size of the tree, it's a higher ratio of trees that are to be replaced. And there's fees that are higher too, based on for the grand tree removal.
And Todd, honestly, it wouldn't mind me if they were all real high on that one, you know? Because what it does, it encourages the the person who's drawing the plan up to be a, you know, a little little more cautious, you know? It's, I mean, although if they're doing the project, they'll probably do it anyway. But at least we want them to try and think a little bit rather than just clearcut everything.
And they they shouldn't be allowed to put this little puny tree in when they took out these grand trees. It just, that's where we've got to stop, you know?
Well, and we do have in our current code, generally, it'd be two, three-inch tree that you plant, but for grand tree removal, it's a four-inch replacement. And it was a significant cost increase from a two or three-inch to four-inch. But and PUDs, we've even gone bigger sometimes, but yeah, I hear you.
And are they species for species per species? Like, for example, if they're removing a live oak, do they replant a live oak?
I think our current code has an allowance of a variety of trees that are permissible. And I think there's even some general language in there that recommends a a variety of species in case you get a disease on one type of tree. They all don't get hit, which probably makes some sense. A lot of times, it's always oak trees that they're planting. But the code allows and supports for a variety of tree types. Doesn't require it to be.
Like a red maple or.
Or a red maple, right. Well, those are some of the points that we've been looking at, talking about, so we're bringing it to you tonight. We're tool retooling the ordinance, still working on completing a draft of that. I know Public Works and CRA want to review it. And then we're going to have a a landscape architect look at as well. So we'll try to complete that as soon as we can and then bring back a work with the the attorneys with a a first reading of the ordinance, of the new ordinance.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Does, would this be where like, because I've seen some trees that have just been trying to be maintained, but they're butchered. In other words, they'll slab off one side of them or I s- there's like one particular. Where, yeah, well, that, but but I mean, I get that, that's different. But I've seen one instance where a a street tree is being pruned like a bonsai and it's just sitting there stunned, you know? Is there any language in this that we would talk about maintenance or, you know? I I don't know if that's where it would be or not.
For like residential developments.
Yeah, anywhere, basically.
Maybe we have some general language that.
Yeah.
And I think there there is general language about that. And I think it's in that section where we're going from one to two years. I saw some general language talked about just general overall maintenance.
Right, because also I had an arborist do mine and you see some of them that kind of get brockled out and the the big head at the top. But he said that's a bad thing to do for storms because if, you know, it makes it top-heavy and it's like a sail. You need the understory stuff to help distribute the wind load, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah, my my husband actually thins the trees, you know, like, so he takes off internal branches so that the wind can pass through it too.
Okay, well, if there's not any other comments, again, you'll get another opportunity. Of course, once we get a draft ordinance in front of you, then you can share additional comment and we'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe we will move forward to the finance director's report.
Ted? Ted Beeson, Finance Director for the city. We're going to move on to tentative millage rate. We ask you at this point in time to consider the millage rate put before you of 6.25. The property appraiser's office came up with 1 million, 1 billion, 783 million for our taxable value. That's an increase of $209 million. And of that, 115 million was new construction that attributed to the tax, the millage rate being at 6.25 and with 0.71% increase over the rollback rate. The rollback rate would have generated 964,000 additional dollars for us. With with going with our current tax rate, we have 1.2 million dollars that we went ahead and generated. And again, when we have a tentative millage rate, we can set that tentative millage rate. Going up is very difficult for us once we start a budget process. Going down is substantially easier.
So it looks like you plan on keeping it at the current rate?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You have a lot of the draft budget done?
Yes, we do.
And this number works okay with what you're, and we'll have a reserve and different things that are able to be handled in that at this rate.
At that rate, yes, we will, our reserve, we we plan on taking down our reserves and trying to do some of the capital work, the capital projects, but.
Well, I mean, like a contingency, we'll have a little contingency there. I mean, if another Milton hits, we're going to have to have some money to to go out and get pumps or whatever you have to do. So you'll have a little contingency.
And we'll lay that contingency out for you.
Okay.
And I move you to approve the millage rate as presented at 6.25.
Second, and and I just want to comment too that, you know, healthy increase in the in the amount coming in too, you know, from as far as from a tax-based standpoint. It's, I mean, that's nice to see. And and we we know we're going to continue it somewhat, but at some point, we're we're going to level out. If we don't, you know. It it's it's something to to keep up, keep thinking about. The other thing that's kind of interesting was our our budget was what, 100 million last year?
Correct.
So the ad valorem was only 10% of it, basically, right?
Well, correct, but in the general fund, the general fund was a 15, 20, I believe, $19 million. And so, yes, I mean, but total 10% was only, yes, the ad valorem taxes.
Yeah, and it's it's always funny to me how not, but it's not as big a amount in the budget as what you would think, you know?
Yeah, we don't rely on it as much as we think. I mean, not that much comes in, so.
Well, and other other cities are much, they don't have enterprise, you know, they don't have enterprise funds and they don't have water, they don't have their own water. And so they they pay a lot higher taxes than our residents do, yeah.
Well, I'm glad about one thing, at least we're not raising the rate. We're keeping it, it's been this rate now for at least what? Six years?
Three or four years that you decreased it at one point in time from 635 to 625.
Right, right. Well, that's good. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Right, I second it already.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Seeing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ted.
The next item on the agenda for the finance director's report is to talk about debt financing related to our public works facility and Zephyr Park. The first slide goes ahead and delineates each of the buildings in the public works facility and shows a total of 27,926,000. There are the new public works administration billion, a building at 6.9 million and new fleet fleet maintenance at 4.8 million. And then as well, the new utilities office and storage building at 4.8 are some of the big-ticket items and new facilities. There are substantial number of facilities that would be rehabbed, but that is a correct listing of your of your buildings. And there is also a site diagram in that agenda packet item as well. Moving on to the second slide. And I apologize for the second slide. There was the lining up in the agenda software, I should have paid closer attention to it. But what's displayed for you on the screen right now is correct. The overall totals would show that the general fund or governmental would be 12,000,000.8 for total cost on this facility. And water and sewer would have a price tag of 11.5 million. And sanitation, 3.5 million. Now, we propose that we go ahead and use fund balance in the general fund to the tune of $5 million and capacity fees to $5 million to pay down $10 million of the project. It would have a total price tag then that would need to be financed at $17,900,000. Sanitation fund would have that 3.5. There is nothing we have in the way of fund balance for the sanitation fund. It would have to be totally debt-financed. Now, we had planned to have Jeff Larson here, our our financial advisor, and thunderstorms kind of socked him into New York City last night. So he's available by phone, should be LinkedIn. With that, I'll take us through the public works debt financing. And then in your package as well, we discussed how we would go ahead and handle Zephyr Park. And Zephyr Park, a total price tag of $16 million. CDBG, we're hoping that that would be coming in at $5 million that we would obtain that grant. The state appropriation already in hand announced at 2.6 million. And then general fund reserve for recreation, which was the old nursing home reserve. And that leaves us a total to be financed for Zephyr Park at 4.3 million. Now, the 4.3 with the 17.9, 22,276,000 that we would look to go ahead and finance over 30 years and to do bonds on that rather than a bank loan. When we built this building, we used a bank loan. It wasn't for 30 years, it was for a shorter period of time. We think that it's a better way to go is to do bonds at this point in time for the city.
Why is that, Mr. Beeson?
Well, the bank loan would be a shorter time, but we'd have to do it. And when we did it last time, we also aimed at Penny for Pasco. Penny for Pasco doesn't have that long term, it can't go past that 15 years.
It can sunset, right, and then and not be rode back in, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I have two questions.
That's good, Rick.
When you, do you have an idea or would Mr. Larson have an idea of if we finance this over 30 years, what the annual payment would be?
Yes, Jeff, are you there by any chance? He's logged in. All right. But yeah, we discussed the numbers today. We're looking at 5.1% interest is what the market is bearing right now. And based on that, then your annual payments would be 1,480,000. Now, that's that's interest rates today.
That's yearly payment?
That's the yearly payment, yes, sir.
Well, one good thing is we won't be paying for the fire district soon, so that'll free up money. That's a couple hundred thousand, right? But I I have another question. When you're talking about Zephyr Park, and I'm sorry I missed the workshop the other night, I was out of town. But we still haven't resolved the Alice Hall Community Center issue. And I think we need to get an estimate of how, what that would cost to replace that building.
Right.
And I think that, I don't know if we need to include it in this, but we need to have a price and figure out how we're going to pay for that and if it would be included. Because you said this wouldn't begin or we we wouldn't be doing this until October, probably.
We wouldn't be able to go ahead. We're going to continue, provided we have a good consensus, the city council, that, you know, this is a big chunk of money. You know, I know that's a lot to swallow. But if you're in favor of doing it, then we're going to move forward with the process. We wouldn't be funded until early November time period. But two debts we have, the city hall and the fire district, will be gone relatively soon. So that would free up that money to, I mean, for this. But I still think we just got to figure out, we have to get an estimate somehow, Billy, of of what Alice Hall, what we're going to put in it and how much it'll cost.
Yeah, we just need to allocate something for that, whatever it is.
Because Zephyr Park really won't be complete until we know what that number is.
Understood.
Good question.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And what happens if we don't get that CDBG grant? You know, then do we go backwards and have to add more money to this?
We would. We would have to go ahead and say that we're going to get those funds from debt financing or any other avenues that we can go ahead and pick up. I mean, it might, it might be a chunk that's going to come from Penny for Pasco or parked income impact fees.
We would pick up little chunks there, but but nothing significant.
Ted, so tell me again what the amount of the payment was annual?
Yeah, at five point one percent interest rate, then annual payment, one million four hundred eighty thousand dollars.
So it's at a million five, basically. And it would come out of several different funds for for the different items, correct?
Correct. We would pledge probably something like non not ad valorem tax in the general fund, which means we would point to, say, utility franchise fees or utility tax and say, that's what we're going to pledge up for it because we know we're going to have that for thirty years and markets will be favorable on that. If we say Penny for Pasco, we can't guarantee it.
And so with that, have you kind of looked projected a little into the future and seen just say, okay, if just say if our budget is increasing five percent in each department, can we handle this for the next five, ten year? Just do a spreadsheet to kind of take a look out into time and see how it affected it?
I haven't formally sat down to do it. I just I know that we have with the growth we've experienced lately, as you referred to, with our growth in ad valorem tax and then other revenues that have come in strong. For a city this size to have just a relatively low debt that you have is just remarkable. Yes, we can project that out and we'll satisfy that for a multi-year program, it will be just fine.
Right, right. And yeah, and it'd be great to see that, too, you know.
Yeah. I should do it. I'll put that in place. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, as Councilman Spenden noted, it's like the falling off of the obligations for the fire department has just been huge. And then the growth in ad valorem tax the last few years has been substantial. This is I've told Billy, I've never worked in an environment like this where it's like budget time is just not Tums, you know, it's like.
It's like, that's good.
That's a good thing, yes.
Well, that's because we've always been pretty fiscally conservative, but we are growing and we have, you know, our budget's over a million dollars. So being a hundred, you know, million dollars. So saying pledging one percent to, you know, buildings in 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 Zephyr Park, which will be important to our residents for another fifty years, that makes sense to do that. That's our job to think about that and do that.
And also what you're saying made me think with the parks, we're going to have to add additional workers on. So we've got to look at those considerations as they go out into time as well. So but I but I I mean, I'm I'm I I think it's the only way to do the projects, honestly.
And Ted, let me ask you this. Can we can we refinance at any time? So if we take out the bond, we can pay down fast without no without a penalty? Or like, for example, if we have Penny for Pasco gets renewed again, we can take, you know, some certain percentage of that to do to use for this purpose, but then we have to reserve that money for something like Alice Hall or another building that needs to be constructed for another purpose. We might use that Penny for Pasco for that.
The refinancing.
Ted, you want me to jump in on that one?
Oh, yes, please. Thank you. State your name. State your name and address for the record.
Jeff Larson, Orlando, Florida Larson Consulting Services, financial advisor to the city. I'm sorry, somehow I was cut off and I had to dial back in. So yes, I wanted to I wanted to to answer the question on the refinancing. A thirty year bond goes out with interest rates every year of a different interest rate. So it's a little different than a bank loan. We have one rate. Ted was letting you know that that the end of it, the 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 twenty five, thirty year rates are more like five point one percent. At the early on maturities, you're more like two point five to two point seven percent. So I just wanted to 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 mention that to you. I want to also mention on a thirty year bond, typically the investors buy these and they have some protection. They have call protection. So for ten years, you really can't refinance it. But then after that, you can refinance and it's not uncommon at all. Those aren't our rules. The federal government changed those rules, but you do have that ability to refinance it down the road. I wanted just to add to what Ted was saying, you know, as an independent person, I do I've been doing this since nineteen ninety two in the state of Florida and your your community is doing quite well. I think it's a very good story. This has to go to the bond insurers, go to the rating agencies. And one of the things that is very a very strong story is your 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 growth, your economic growth. Obviously, you assess values. You're going in the right direction. And that's been a more than just a one year occurrence. You know, there's been a there's been a pattern established there. I think that's a very good story to tell. This Ted mentioned ad valorem, this would this would be a covenant to budget and appropriate from legally available non ad valorem revenues. What does that mean? Well, your CFO and your city manager and doing the budget would go ahead and put it in the budget every year to pay them one million four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but they can use a variety of sources to do that. You don't pledge ad valorem because that would be a GO bond, but you have a lot of flexibility. You can't use grants. Hold on a second. Let me see here.
Hey, Jeff, you.
Is that better if I take you off the?
I can't hear him.
Is that better if I take it off the speakerphone? Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, Jeff, if you can just speak up a little bit louder. It's raining pretty heavy here.
And we have a metal roof.
We had it. We had it yesterday, and that's why they canceled all the flights. So anyway, yeah, I'll I'll try to go. So the rates are actually around two point five to to five percent, number one. Number two, your your city's got a very good story. A lot of work to be done. I'm excited about it. I think the word I would use is stewardship. When you've got thirty seven million dollars in projects and your staff has figured out how to contribute a lion's share of that. You know, you're going to finance about twenty one million instead of thirty seven million. Let me just state for the record that a thirty seven million dollar project fund, the annual debt service would be higher by about more than a million dollars a year. So by contributing some of your cash you've set aside, you still have a fund balance. You still have contingencies, which is very important. That saves you over thirty million dollars in total debt service over the life of the financing. So I I wanted to share that with the with the commission. What we also need, Ted, if it's okay, and I and and you and I and Billy talked about this, and we'll get with your city attorney. We're at a point where consensus would be wonderful. And then also the ability for your staff to work with us to get engagements to the key professionals so we can, you know, move this to the next stage for you. The attorneys, the bond counsel, disclosure counsel, the investment banker, they get retained, but they only get paid if the deal closes. So they're at risk, but we do need their help in in doing a lot of the documents and getting things back to the to to you at the city. So I wanted to add that, if that's okay, to to for your consideration, if you could hear me.
Ted, can I ask a question? Jeff, this is Lance Smith. I hope you can hear me. Is at what point at what point is the rate established on the bonds?
It's when the it's when we've gotten the ratings, we've gotten the bond insurer in place, we come back and you send out a like for a stock offering. I don't have the agenda in front of me because I plan to be with you. I apologize. But there's a period of time there when we come back to the to to the city and we ask for the elected officials to pass a series resolution in the timetable. Then, you know, the the official statement, the preliminary official statement goes out. And about a week later, the interest rates are set. And that and it would probably say in the financing timetable, price bonds, that would be the nomenclature. So it's toward the end of the process. We have time to consider what do you want to do with Alice Hall? I heard Alice Hall come up. I don't think the reimbursement resolution is actually on the agenda for tonight, so maybe that was good. We can figure out if there's money to to include for Alice Hall. You definitely don't want to wake up in six months and do a separate financing for Alice Hall. If you need money for that and you want to include that in this because it's we're trying to include the projects we can so the fees are less on one financing versus doing multiple bond financings, if that helps. So Ted, you have the financing timetable there?
Yeah, Jeff, as we get into the process, then before we go ahead and issue the bonds, we'll know the interest rate. We come back to city council for authorization to move forward, correct?
What we do with a seri- well, what we do with a series resolution is the series resolution would authorize bonds of up to a certain amount, certain dollar amount, a term not to exceed a certain length. And if it's thirty year bonds, I always ask for thirty one, just in case it's thirty and a half years. A maximum interest rate on the bonds and then a maximum fee paid to the investment banker. And the 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 city would approve the series resolution, then we go out and and we issue the bonds and we cannot accept that and have the mayor usually sign or the city manager or finance director sign if we've exceeded any of those parameters. So when the city approves the series resolution, we haven't priced it yet. That comes later. But it's priced under certain parameters, including the the maximum interest rate, so.
Right.
And I helped set those.
And then, as I understand it, that you'll you'll come up with a rating or some agency comes up with a rating on these, right?
Yes, sir. We would go. You don't have outstanding bonds right now. You did a bank loan, and I know you do state revolving fund, I I believe, Ted. I don't have your audit in front of me. So so we would talk to the bond insurers because they're double A rated. We would talk to the rating agencies. And we would determine if bond insurance is needed. Who do we pick? There's two to choose from. And then we would talk to Moody's, Standard and Poor's and Fitch and ask for an underlying rating for the city. That's part of the process. And that would that would be taking some of your key staff members with me and my team up to New York and doing presentations about two hours long. So it's a very thorough process. Part of my job is prepare them, get the material put together. Yeah, but they want to hear from the CEO and the and the CFO of the city.
Mr. Beeson, so, you know, when I hear about all these other professionals being involved, so are all the fees and commissions in these numbers that we're seeing?
Your commission or your?
Well, Jeff.
I'll answer that for Ted. Yep, the annual the annual debt service includes the fees that are paid at closing. And they only get paid if we go out and do the deal and you say, okay. But 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 it's unfair to ask them to do a bunch of work if if they don't have a chance to be paid if if we're all successful. So that's the typical process.
And that will be approximately one percent of what we're going to go out.
Of the issue?
Yes.
And I and what I saw was there was a eighteen million dollars worth of bonds we're looking to put out. It's seventeen nine something, right? So I'm calling it eighteen.
But that's just for public work.
For that's for the public works facilities.
So what's the other one?
Right.
The four million dollars, the four point eight million, I believe, this is for Zephyr Park.
So so it's twenty two something.
Right, yes, sir.
So if we add two million for the Alice Hall building, then we're at twenty four.
Right.
So I I mean, I think we have to earmark something.
Yeah.
The other thing, too, is that we could use we can use Penny for Pasco money for for Alice Hall. And we can get a bank loan from Alice Hall. You know, the challenge is is that we're paying we're paying a lot of money over a very long period of time. And at the end of that thirty years, some of those buildings at Public Works that are metal buildings, it's the end of their useful life. So we're kind of got to think about that.
Yeah, our hope is that we match our financing and that the useful life of those assets would exceed that. You're correct.
Yeah, that is a that that's a requirement under under federal tax law as well as financial due diligence, you know. We'd we'd get a list of all the assets from your public works and from Ted. And we would get the estimated average useful life of what of what is being financed. And the average life of the bonds can't exceed the average life of of the assets we're financing. So that's part of our due diligence, working with you as your financial advisor, so.
Yeah, because the the average life of the library, for example, is is over a hundred years. It's a brick building, but a metal a metal building is not doesn't have the same.
Right. And a thirty year bond has an average life of about twenty two years, if that's helpful to you. So we'll we'll we're that's part of the process. And it may be we end up doing twenty five year bonds if the average life is less. I don't I can't speak to that yet. But we'll do a not to exceed term based on the ability to do that. That spreads out your debt service. And that gives you the ability to have other things coming on board. I know some of your debt's fallen off. That's great. And hopefully hopefully that helps clarify things a little bit.
Thanks, Jeff. I do believe that we have consensus here.
Okay. So what we what we'll do, Ted, is we'll we'll have the key attorneys and the key people get engagements letters to you that you can review with staff and the city attorney. And we'll move the the process forward. And we we appreciate it and honor to serve you, so.
Yes, sir. Just one more thing. I I just threw out two million, but we need to look at that figure. Let's get what we know we can do that for. So.
Agreed. And and I think council's been really clear that we've got to replace Alice Hall before the other one gets knocked down. We have to have a plan of action. So please, let's make sure. And it and our our community deserves it. So.
Okay.
Understood. Yes, yes, sir. You had a question? We don't need a formal vote, actually. This is just get a consensus and we'll move forward.
Yeah, I think we have a everyone's. What?
I need to hear this consensus. Man, new assistant city attorney, just for the record, can we just have a a motion directing staff?
I move that we direct staff to follow through with this recommendation or proposal.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I wanted to ask Mr. Larson a question that didn't you work for the town of Kenneth City, is that right?
I'm sorry, which city?
Did you work for Kenneth City for a while or Temple Terrace?
I've done work for a bunch of different communities. Very often, one of the funds we run that you're also involved, I have two companies, Florida Safe. I think we have over eighty to hundred communities that invest in Florida Safe. So those communities, I've not served as their financial advisor. I've been I've been around long enough. I've served some folks when I was previously an investment banker, but now I've had my own firm since two thousand nine.
Okay, all right.
We did a we did a bond financing recently in Inverness, yes.
Inverness, and he's up in New York with the city of Venice right now.
City of Venice, they they were able to fly out and my 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 plane was kept on the ground, so.
We go to the next one. Yes, four point three. With four point three, it's storm pay policy. And Jessica has.
I'll drop I'll drop off Ted, if that's okay.
That's fine. Yes.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
And Jessica has moved that item along, and I'm going to ask her to come up and present that.
Jessica Carter, Assistant Finance Director. I'll try to eat the microphones. You guys can hear me. Storm pay policy. This came about after Milton. We started with Carlisle and Thompson. And the very first question that they asked right out the door is, we need a copy of your red book and a copy of your storm pay policy. Well, we had a red book, but we did not have an exact storm pay policy. So as we started our FEMA application, the very first question they asked was a copy of our red book and a copy of our storm policy. So we quickly realized that we were a little short on that aspect. Not that FEMA was going not going to reimburse this, but they will only be able to follow what our red book policy is for paying our employees. So the extra incentives that we were giving to our employees for working during the storm, for staying home and working all the extra overtime for all the storm.
Mike, sorry.
Not all of that would be reimbursable based on our red book. So we wanted to make sure that we took advantage of Milton. The storm before that was Irma, which was over eight years ago. So it's been a while since we've had to deal with this. So with Milton, we took that as an example. We wanted to make sure that we are consistent with every storm going forward. It's clear to all of our employees and that will be covered for FEMA applications and storms in the future. The policy that we drafted has been reviewed by all the department heads. It's also been reviewed by Carlisle and Thompson with a few suggestions, since they work closely with FEMA and our FEMA application. And it's also been reviewed by our labor attorney. So we believe we're we are ready to proceed. So that way we have some. So we believe we are ready to proceed, so that way we have something consistent to go forward in the future.
I move we approve the emergency preparation pay policy as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. City managers report.
Item 5.1 is the ZEDC quarterly update.
Good evening. You should have...
Name and address, please.
Hello, Dr. Stovall.
Yeah, Randy Stovall with the East Pasco Chamber, and you should have somewhere at your place a one-page, and I really wanted you to see our new logo. That's the reason you have that pretty colored thing there. So we kind of moved forward as ZEDC, and some things are going on that are kind of exciting. You may recall the work project for us, kind of our research project this year is to update our website, and so in talking with steering committee, we decided it's time to retire the clearly Zephyr Hills website, replace it with something that uses the new logo that's underneath the chamber. And the logic there was that it seems like when people are researching a new community, they often search for the Chamber of Commerce, because every community usually has one, thinking that clearly Zephyr Hills was just not as likely to be something they would stumble upon, but the chamber probably was. And so Vicki's been working very hard to get the website looking really good, and what I would tell you, if you go to the East Pasco Chamber website today and kind of look at, there's a section called government.
Government, yes?
Oh, you're looking at it?
Yeah, it's under business at the bottom.
Okay, so you'll see this logo and then this description, and so Vicki wants us to understand she's not finished with all of this, and so she's still, it's a work in progress, but I think she's made good progress so far to help us market our community. At our most recent stakeholders meeting, and that's the one where we have community people come together, that's like every other meeting for us, and the last one we had in this room with representatives from the Pasco Economic Development Council, and as you know, they have many programs to assist people to get successfully started with a new business, and I know there's been discussion here at council sometimes in the past about wanting to make sure new businesses have a chance to thrive and not perhaps fail early on. And so that was a really good presentation, and we're lucky to have PEDC as one of our partners. We're beginning to plan for the economic summit that comes up in October. You may recall, last year, we had a hurricane, so we did it in December, but we're hopeful we're not going to have a hurricane this year, and that'll be in October. And the topic that the steering committee likes is generally conservation, and, you know, the city heard some of it tonight, it's been very active in that arena. So some of the possible presentation topics would be the tree ordinance, there's a conservation element for the comprehensive plan that's well along the way to be developed. There is certainly a lot of work that you've been doing with water, and so we want to talk about water, perhaps Swift Mud would be helpful in that presentation. We know that whether or not this is appropriate, the county has what they call an environmental land program, where they purchase land for conservation purposes. The county is also building two regional parks very close to us, and we're hopeful it might get a presentation on that, so they would serve our citizens. And then we wanted to talk a little bit about clean energy. You know, if you drive through some of the newer developments, you'll see a lot of people with solar panels on their roof, so it'd be nice to have some discussion with that. So that's coming, and we'll keep you informed as that gets developed. And then the last thing, I just wanted to be sure you knew that Vicki's continuing to work personally to get better and to give herself more tools to effectively serve us, since she completed an economic development workshop put on by, as she sees, it's the...
ACC.
Yeah, so thank you, Vicki, for doing that. She's working hard on the other half. So, any questions?
Dr. Stovall, I think that's a great theme. Tell me again about the parks. Where are you thinking? Is it land conservation, or, you know, because some of the equipment, for example, for the parks is recycled plastic. It's 100% recycled plastic, so that's, you know...
Yeah, so what my, the county park part, I wanted to see if we could get the ELAMP people to come. They run parks and ELAMP, and talk about those two big parks. In our case, we need to just decide where we are when it gets to be October with our park plan, and perhaps we could highlight Hercules as kind of our example of what a wonderful park can be, and then present the plan.
Thank you.
Man, I wonder if you've looked at all, you know, on the east side of town is the Green Swamp, basically, and Swift Mud property there. And Swift Mud has used some of it for recreation with trails and things in there, but I just wondered if maybe down the road...
Good idea.
There'd be a way to incorporate that property. It can't be developed, so if we could do something in there and look at that in terms of conservation, recreation, trails, things like that.
Good idea.
I also just wanted to say that the summit, October 8th, tend to leave, right? So get that on your calendar, and get that on your calendar.
And no hurricanes are allowed.
No hurricanes are allowed.
No hurricanes allowed.
Any more questions for Dr. Stovall?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stovall.
Thank you, sir. I guess we... 5.2?
Yes, sir. Item 5.2, this is the award of bid to Stellar Development, excuse me, Stellar Development, Inc., and this is for the construction of box hangers. If you remember, the city received state appropriation through FDOT to provide $6.6 million for two box hangers, taxiway, foxtrot, and a new 6,400 square foot FBO terminal building. The design for the terminal is complete and is ready to execute when funding becomes available. The estimated cost of the new terminal is 5.5 million, so we've taken that portion out of the project and shelved it. It's not a revenue-producing portion of the construction. The other aspects of the project are being executed at this time. Unfortunately, for the two box hangers and taxiway foxtrot, we have a $1.7 million shortfall to build the second hangar. After close review, the airport, meeting with the finance department, we can utilize 1.7 million of projected cash, or not projected, but cash on hand, to build the two hangers and taxiway foxtrot. That will leave a projected balance of $438,325 in balance reserve on September 30th of 2026.
And this is reserves from, and for the airport fund, right?
Correct. This is specifically airport funds.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that's what the money's for.
Correct, and with the two box hangers, those are revenue-producing, so that's the reason why we kept those in, removed the terminal because it is not revenue-producing. If there are not any questions, or if there are questions, staff recommends, the engineers recommend, holy cow, I'm trying to read a memo, instead of just talking, staff recommends approval of awarding the bid to Stellar Development Incorporated with bringing contracts back before council at the next meeting.
I have a question. Okay, so you're recommending that we use the grant money plus our, so we have about $2.3 million in reserves at the airport?
Correct.
What do you mean by a projected cash balance of $438,000 on September 30th, '26?
So we ran the, so we ran the numbers and pulled out the 1.7 because it'll take...
So you'll be building it over the year, so right now we're in good shape with that. At the end of the year, when you've built these, that's what the cash balance is.
Correct, yeah, so the 2.3 will minus the 1.7, give you roughly the 4.38, and it'll all be, it should be completed in the next fiscal year.
And I also have one question. I'm going to ask the same question. I hope I don't embarrass myself, and you tell me that every box hanger's been built by Stellar Development, but is this somebody that we've done business before, that we have a relationship with, that we know they're going to do a great job?
This is a, this is a new contract for us.
Mr. Coleman? Share with us why the committee chose this group.
They did, the company did.
Nathan Coleman, good evening, Airport Director. Yeah, this went out competitively bid through the engineers' process, and basically this was the low bidder. I have no previous experience with this group, did some background checks, and been told they're a good developer, but that's really the only thing I know of them at this point.
Have they done similar projects, other box hanger projects?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, just asking.
And so what we're doing is doing some taxiways and two box hangers, right? Is that right, or?
Correct.
Okay.
In the state appropriations, we had the two box hangers, the FBO, and the terminals. We took out the terminals, Billy explained, so now we're doing foxtrot and two box hangers.
Okay, and are we doing plans for the, we are doing plans for the?
So the terminal is designed, it could be, it's, I think they're biddable. I don't know where we are in that process.
It's ready to go out to bid. We're just short.
The foxtrot, the pavement, all that's been, been...
It's all out, they're actually under construction right now.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry, just to interrupt real quick, foxtrot, like Nathan said, is under construction. We did them as separate projects, the foxtrot and then the hangers.
And then you have, you have one prospector, one tenant for one of the box hangers already, right?
Yes, sir. We've got a lot of people interested, so I know we got some weight on one that we're looking at. So, yeah, I mean, they'll be, they'll be filled up quick.
Right, that won't be a problem then, and hopefully it will spur, doing these taxiways will allow us to put other box hangers along them, is that right?
Yeah, we have a design now that we've done. I'll share with Billy, share it with you guys, but where the foxtrot is going with these two box hangers, we did airport, the new road off Austin.
Right.
So now this will connect, and then we'll have the one that connects into the back of the box hangers, but then it can just start developing all the way out. I mean, we got a, we actually got designed for like 55 box hangers on the southwest corner.
Okay, great, great.
Are you doing any more tee hangers? Don't you have like 100 people on a waiting list for a tee hanger?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. In 2018, we actually were projected to do some tee hangers. That got pushed out a few years. I went back into program to try to bring it back. DOT now, because they look at infrastructure and safety with airports first, that's their primary means of funding. So with that, to answer your question, I've got development to put box, or to put tee hangers, but we'd have to relocate South Avenue. That come into conflict when we did the event center, and we kind of said, well, that's probably not going to happen anytime soon, so we've got to push that out. So I would ask for direction from the council and the city manager, if we want to develop more tee hangers, we probably want to look at relocating South Avenue to tie the, off the airport road, and then all that can be developed as tee hangers. But there's quite a bit of work to get there, so that's just a discussion, how do you guys want to move? But we can, where we're at, we can build three more tee hangers in the section we're at now, but to really develop, we're going to have to go across the street, as far as tee hangers go.
Alright.
So you'll have two aspects. You'll have the tee hangers, and then on the southwest side will be more like corporate box hangers, community hangers, so you have two different type of developments.
So the planes would actually cross the street?
No, they would move the street.
South Avenue would be moved to the north, and it would have but Lincoln Heights.
Okay.
It would be between Lincoln Heights and the city yard, our existing city yard. So one thing somewhat related to this, but independent, is we do have an individual looking at building a 26,000 square foot hangar to bring in, I think, two, three, four different jets to house here at this airport, and that would be a private, private dollars, private investment.
Inside the fence or outside?
Inside the fence.
Okay, so that would be a lease, they'd lease the property?
It's a land lease development.
Land lease, okay.
Right across from the Aero Center where Hawk Aviation is now, that parcel right there, so about two and a half acres, yeah, 26,275 square foot.
Good.
I got a Falcon 2000.
Nobody knows what that is.
A jet, a big.
A big fancy jet, what are you saying?
And I have two more questions.
Several expensive planes.
Yeah, it holds 2,800 gallons of fuel, so it'll fill, our fuel truck's 3,000, so one fuel truck to fill that plane.
Do we, have you ran numbers of what the revenue will be from these tee hangers? You kind of know what that is to...
For the tee hangers?
The box hangers, the box hangers.
Yeah, and amortize about 20 years at $35,000 to $3700 a month, but with the fuel, additional fuel sales, I think in about 15 years, we'll regroup that money.
Recoup, okay, that's what I was wondering, and we have that, that fee got set a while ago, right? Didn't we just set that?
Yeah, we have, we have other fees that are set. This here will probably go about between $7 and $8 a square foot, 6,400 square feet, so that's, yeah, around $37, $3800 a month will be on the low side. If we do RFPs, Cresford Proposals, we could probably get, generate more revenue.
And that's what my question was, are we, are we underbid, you know, is our cost under what it should be, but you've got a mechanism to be able to charge more, right? It's not set in stone, is it?
No.
Okay, okay. And then my second question is, you know, I know we've got this appropriation when it was written with the FBO in mind, are we going to be deemed by legislators because we're not using it for what we asked for it? And if the answer's no, how do we know that?
We've included the senator and the representative who sponsored the appropriation.
Okay.
They've been in conversations from the very beginning that we realized there was not enough money. We still have to go through the formal process of removing it and stating how we're going to fulfill our requirement of the FBO, so that's, you know, looking down the road, how do we, how do we get that built? We had had conversations and had suggestions from the former DOT secretary, Secretary Gwynn, he's no longer there, so now we'll have to talk to Secretary Hall and make sure we get that language that satisfies them.
Yeah, because that's, that's real important if, you know, if that money gets pulled because we didn't use it how we asked for, so.
Yeah, we, when this started, this started, I think that was written in '21, and the fees, I mean, your cost estimates, the 6.6 would have done it at that time.
Not going to happen.
Not, not.
And are you kind of at a stagnant point where you can only go so far until the FBO is there to be able to move forward with more projects and having other things? I don't know if I'm asking that correctly.
No, we're, what, we got to change the language, as Billy just explained, as far as that, not being able to do the FBO, but in the JSEP right now, with our local DOT, we've programmed again for, you know, the FBO, but it's going to be a 50/50. So we probably won't pick that up until '28, unless they can get the funding, and we're looking at, you know, our revenues and we're able to come up with that match sooner, then we'll do it sooner, if it comes available. But again, through the DOT, they look at tee hangers, box hangers, at like a second, you know, they scale them like on a second rather than being a first, you know, meaning that anything that's infrastructure, safety, you know, your taxiways, runways, your aprons, your fuel farm, is all first priority. So as all the other airports, we got to pull out of one pot, with all of them like, we're good. I mean, when we get this, what we're running 1.9 rehab, I mean, come out there, everything's new. So if other airports, all their infrastructure gets solid like we are, then they start funding revenue generating projects. So if other airports, all their infrastructure gets solid like we are, then they start funding revenue generating projects.
Or BOs or whatever.
Hangers.
Okay.
So it is a little tougher to get it through the JCPA
Okay.
than having, you know, legislators or state appropriations funding.
But, but it doesn't hinder you from, um, being able to apply for more and more grants?
No, it won't stop us.
That's, that's all I want.
Now, what it does do is, if it doesn't go through, and I, I told Mr. Poe that the JCPA won't pick it up for a year, right? Mr. Poe?
Again, if, if we're, if it, the appropriation is vetoed, then the, the JCPA, DOT can't help us for one year.
Right.
Yeah. But this isn't vetoed, we're just.
This is a vetoed, alright. This is a necessity, we're not able to do it, right, yeah.
Thank you. I know I asked weird questions.
No, they're good questions.
You know, I, my mind's wrapping around these things.
My mind pops out when I get up here. Come out of the office, I can tell you everything.
I know. You're great, thank you.
This mic scares me.
There you go, come on, man.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nathan.
Good job. Uh, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, sir.
A move for approval of business item 5.2?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 5.3?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, yes, sir. Wait for my computer to turn back on. Um, item 5.3 is approval of piggyback, agreement 41-25-19 with Rep Services Inc. for playground equipment. This is something we had talked about at the last workshop. Rep Services has a current contract with Clay County and for the installation of playground equipment. And that agreement is on here. There's a copy of the piggyback agreement. With that, staff recommends approval of agreement 41-25-19 for the purchase of playground equipment and installation with Rep Services.
Do we have any questions? I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. So we have two items here. The first is for the company that will install the equipment and the second is for the equipment itself.
The, for, the, what you have in front of you now, the item 5.3 is for Rep Services. Rep Services is a turnkey. We purchase the equipment, uh, they install, sorry, they purchase and install.
So what is 5.4?
5.4 is the actual, giving us the authority to purchase.
That's what I asked, I think. We're doing the company that's gonna do it and then we're buying the equipment. Is that right?
Correct, but we're buying them from Rep Services. Rep Services sells it and installs it.
So the, so the first is the installation cost, the second is the cost of the equipment?
No, I think it's all together.
The, item 5.3 is just to, an agreement that we're gonna use Rep Services as our, as our provider for playground equipment, nothing more than that. So there's no cost or anything associated with this agreement. It's saying that we're gonna use them based on their contract, I guess their prices, based on their contract prices with Clay County. Right, their unit cost. So typically how this would have worked any other time is we would have awarded a bid, next meeting, we would have awarded the contract. And then the third meeting, we would come back and said, hey, we want to purchase X, Y, and Z. And theoretically, you give approval and then we go purchase it. But because of timing of where we are in the, in the fiscal year and the direction from council, we've put both the contract agreement and the task order to purchase on the same agenda, or, sorry, same agenda, separate items.
Any more questions?
I just have one more question. I know when Ms. Hamilton talked to us, um, there was, uh, not enough funds to, to include some of the equipment at.
We've corrected that issue.
You corrected that issue?
Yes, ma'am.
So you changed the equipment that was going there?
Uh, we've massaged some numbers.
You massaged numbers, okay.
Yes.
Cause I was trying to find the pictures, so I, okay, so, um, okay.
Yep, so, yep.
Yes, ma'am. If there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, well, I don't understand this. On the, on this, there's no fiscal impact?
Correct, because we're just signing an agreement with Rep Services. So item 5.3 is just signing an agreement saying we're gonna use them as our representative.
Okay. It's weird. Isn't that weird? Okay. I think it's weird, alright.
But we don't know what the cost is, right? So back to my example, we typically would bring the agreement and that's it, right? So we would then, once we have Rep Services, we would begin to work with them and say, we're gonna pick a train, you know, a train, uh, playground, we're gonna, uh, zip lines, swings, um, a water themed park, and then we would get the prices. But because we're trying to streamline it, the next item is where the prices are.
So they're gonna be paid out of this next item?
Correct.
Right. They've been providing advice to you.
Correct.
And, and now, and, and now they're, they, they mark up the equipment or whatever and that's how they make their money.
Correct, and it's all based on this agreement, which is a piggyback off of Clay County's.
Okay.
Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval of business item 5.3?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 5.4?
Yes, sir. Uh, so this one here is, uh, this item 5.4 is for the purchase of playground equipment for five city parks, Veterans Memorial, Gunner Paul, Ellis Herald, Train Depot, and Shepherd Park, utilizing the piggyback agreement with Clay County that, uh, with Rep Services that was just approved. Uh, staff's been working with Scott Brushwood of Rep Services on the cost of installing playground equipment at the following city parks, Ellis Herald Depot, Veterans Gunner Paul, Shepherd Park. Rep Services completed the design and layout presented to City Council at their July 14th meeting. Funding for the improvements to the parks is included in the approved fiscal year 2425 budget. Total cost of the improvements for the five parks is $2,145,661.81, which includes a 5% contingency. Total cost breakdown is attached. Fiscal impact is, uh, not to exceed $2,145,661.81. If you look at the second page of this memo, you can see the breakdown per park. So Veterans Memorial Park, its, uh, total bid is 300, and I'll use round numbers, $342,332. Gunner Paul, Paul Park, $425,000. Ellis Herald, $215,000. Train Depot, $898,000. Shepherd Park, $266,000. For the total of the $2.145 million. With that, staff recommends approval of this agree, or, um, of this item. And I'll answer any questions.
I have a question. Um, so in this proposal, we're going to just, every park is gonna get complete new equipment, correct?
Correct.
So it won't be phased in like where, and I don't know how old some of the equipment is a different place. My only concern, I guess, is that whenever it gets to the end of the life, then if everything has to replace all, again, all at once, I mean, is there some stuff that's not that old yet that doesn't need to be replaced right away or?
Well, I'll look at Public Works Director.
It's our, it's our, it's our.
All old.
Is Ms. Hamilton here?
She is not. She's on vacation this evening.
Cause I'd like to ask a question.
Good evening. Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. The question is, uh, most of the equipment that we're gonna replace with Rep Services, that they'll do, that they'll furnish and install the new equipment. Most of the equipment is antiquated and obsolete. You can't get parts for it, so to speak, and so that's, it's basically just a facelift of all the playground equipment. But any of the old stuff that's been phased out, we're gonna demo. That's part of their price. We met with, um, the gentleman Scott from Rep Services last week. City Manager Poe, myself and Gail Hamilton, and we kind of worked out the logistics, so to speak, if this were to be approved tonight.
And then like Zephyr Park's not included because we're doing that in totality later with the other that we talked about.
Yes, sir.
Cruisin' Field is already new and up to date. And then Cruisin', I mean, uh, I'm sorry, Hercules. And then Cruisin's not included because we'll be doing stuff in the fiscal, next fiscal year. So we will have some
From staggering.
Staggering up equipment, but trust me, I mean, some of this stuff I remember doing in the 80s and 90s.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah, I was gonna say Veterans, Veterans and Shepherd neither one have playground equipment currently.
Right.
Um, Ellis Herald, equipment's old.
Yeah.
Um, the newest is probably Gunner Paul and then Hercules, I mean, excuse me, then Train Depot, and Train Depot is probably
20 at least?
Yeah, I was gonna say 15, 20 years old at least.
Yeah, most of the equipment is, um, out of date. You, we can't get parts for it. Councilman Spina mentioned back when we did that, there was a lot of FERDAP grants, if you'll remember, we did FERDAP grants to replace the, uh, playground equipment at the time. And like I said, it's 20 plus years.
And back then they didn't put covers over stuff and I mean, it, it.
Right. Well, we wanted to, uh, make sure everything's ADA accessible and to do it right.
I imagine the materials are better
Yeah.
nowadays too.
Yeah, in fact, these are all plastic. Most of the materials are plastic. They have some steel infrastructure, but they're, some of them are recycled plastic. My biggest concern is that we're plopping a playground into Veterans Park and we really haven't planned that park. We haven't really talked about how that's gonna be programmed. Are we gonna have a facility where the veterans can have a ceremony? Are we gonna do this fire pit? You know, maybe the fire pit is kind of mirror image to the flagpole. Maybe it's, you know, it's got a brick paved way, you know, paved area like we have now. Maybe it has the concrete benches that we have now. But then you go around the perimeter and we've got those metal benches that have vinyl coating on them. So I would like to see some design, some planning as it relates to that entire park. I don't have any objection to this, but whatever we do needs to be consistent. Every improvement needs to be consistent in this particular park. And not this kind of, you know, not this kind of me, metal, not this kind of coating, not this kind, you know, all hodgepodge and no thought process to the overall, that's my only concern about this particular. I, I mean, where we already have playgrounds, I think it's a great idea to put new in. But I'm a little concerned about just plopping this in the middle of the field and not really thinking about where else it goes.
Well, um, just to answer your question real quick, we do have a conceptual plan of a overlay on an aerial where it would go. And my idea would be, you know, to follow the park's master plan, but also if we put in this new equipment, this proposed at Veterans Park as we replace benches and that type of thing, match what matches the, um, consistent with the playground.
Shane, what question did you get today when that plan came in?
But
The location.
But that's why I, when, when the DAR lady was here, I said that they, she showed me with you and Gail so that you have input into how this, where this is going and then where the benches would go and the fire pit. So, I mean, that's kind of, you're gonna have to kind of wing it, I guess.
Yeah, so I, I will say that email that Gail had sent earlier today, it was on the lines of, of what council is saying is with the DAR, um, and with these, you know, with the playground equipment, there needs to be a plan and there needs to be a layout of, of where we want all of it and, and what it looks like. So, um, staff's, staff's working on that.
Well, so, if you, oh, sorry. If you just look at this plan, I, I know where this is because I know this park pretty well. It, so there's a, there's a kind of a, there's a loop around it and then there's a, there's a center section. There's a center section of asphalt. So it looks like this is to the, was it east or north, north side or whatever? So it's one side of that, that sidewalk that bisects the whole park, right?
Yes, it's, uh, relatively close. We, we discussed the location earlier today. It's close to the parking lot. So we just resurfaced and we resurfaced the trail out there too.
Yeah, it's kind of to the southeast. What they showed today that we looked at was a, to the southeast, kind of the southeast quadrant of the, of the four quadrants there of the inner walking thing. I questioned if that's the best location, um, just, you know, what is the plan for the entire park? So that is something that we'll be looking at as we go through this.
I don't have any objection to the design overall. I don't have any objection to the equipment itself. I just, I have objection to the placement currently.
I think we could field locate the equipment, go ahead and order the equipment because there's a long lead time on it and, uh, just field locate it
Yeah.
with council's direction.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we should let staff, I mean, they know the, let staff locate it and do it. We don't have to.
I mean, I like the idea that we're going ahead and doing stuff like this.
Yeah.
I like it that you thought it out and have a plan. And like for next year, maybe we do some lighting around the walkway.
Yes.
Maybe some fencing to keep the people out, like you said, you know.
Right.
Budget for that, but I like it that y'all have been proactive and you're jumping in there. We'll figure it out. Y'all are smart, you can figure it out.
Right. Well, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've been waiting for a year for this park's master plan, right?
Right.
And isn't that part of this? Isn't that, wouldn't that be in that park's master plan?
Well, it would, except for that, we don't have all the elements yet.
Yeah, we've been waiting forever for that.
Yeah.
And, and that's no end in sight. If, if you ask me, I don't know when that's ever gonna end. Because that seems to be just a continuing, uh, last year it was gonna be done in August and here we are, August, a year, year later. And it's, it's nowhere close, so.
But we could, they could get together, you could get together with a consultant.
Decision.
Absolutely.
And, and make a decision about, okay, we're gonna have these five, we know these five elements and we know we're gonna replace X, Y, and Z over the next three years. And, you know, the, the, the light poles will not be, you know, this is mill finished aluminum, they're gonna be dark aluminum. So everything needs to match, all the, all the finishes need to match.
Agreed. And I think this is, this is great. We need, we need our parks updated. So we're happy to, we're not saying we're not happy to go forward, get the stuff, you know, ordered and ready to go. And then we'll have to tweak as we go.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion. I move we approve item. What item is it?
5.4.
5.4. And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor's announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, I do appreciate all the work that staff's done. Cause I know this was something that council just pushed on you to say, let's get this stuff going and get it ordered. And, and I think it's gonna really improve our parks and, and be a great asset to our youth. Todd and Rodney, I just have a question. Um, you know, I know that we're nearing close to that project that's off of Geiger Road to, that they're talking about. So, um, it's already been cleared. Did they file, you know, the land was cleared. Did they ever do a report to tell us what trees they took down and why they took them down and, and the, the
The, the north side of, they're talking, they're talking about the north side that's, that's been, it's, we need to be careful with the, the use of the word clear. Because they were given permission to go in, and correct me if I'm wrong, they were given permission to go in and, and remove trees that were under the threshold of the six inches DBH, correct?
I'm not talking the north side one then. I'm talking the one off of Wilson Drive. I'm talking the Wilson Drive one. That's the south side.
Yep.
So, um, but, but the land, the trees were all cut down out there. So my question is, did, did they ever file for those trees to be able to be cut down? Or is there a way to know, I, I mean, obviously we know there were trees there and they're gone now. And, but are we going to use that as they want to take out more trees, right? So now they can take out 50% more trees, but they've already taken out
Those were the damage.
50 trees. No.
That's mine.
No, they weren't.
Todd Vanneburg, Planning Director, um, yeah, they haven't submitted development plan. I think I've heard that they're close to submitting a development plan, which are, again, include an updated Arbor's report, which they had told me, they informed me that they had a lot of damaged trees down as a result of the storms. And so I, I said, they asked and I said, yeah, you can, and you should, update your, um, Arbor's report, the tree survey to reflect trees that have been removed as a result of storm. So again, I haven't seen their formal submit, submitted to the city with the updated Arbor's report and tree survey. But, um, yeah, they shouldn't be taken down.
But that, this was way prior to the storm, that trees were taken down on that property. So my question is, did they ever file to take trees down over there?
No, no, they've not.
So, um, is there a way for us to use aerials to see what was there and what they took? And what they took down to use that in, because I know they're going to come back and want to take out more trees. And I want to make sure we're not taking out trees that are going to keep this subdivision enclosed to where it's not. That's my question.
Yeah, we'll have to have a conversation around that. I don't know that we're aware that they took out trees on the southern portion. Again, we'd have to verify that they didn't take out trees that are exempt from our policy.
That's what I'm, I'm asking. How do we?
I would think there'd be evidence if they're like clear cutting, healthy trees out. But, but again, yeah, even so, you've got trees that came down. I don't know. We would rely on, on residents to notify that would go to code enforcement. If there's illegal trees being removed. Looking at aerials, I think on a tree that's, a site that's at heavily, heavily covered with trees would be difficult to look at aerials. I think to document trees.
I just want to be careful with what they're going to come back asking for more and more trees to be removed. I just, I want to make sure you guys are looking at that, that we're not removing all the trees that are aligning to, to help buffer these homes that are there.
Very carefully, especially around.
So what I hear the mayor saying is that it's 50% of the trees when we approve the rezoning, not 50% of the trees after they were, after they did clear cut.
Right.
So what was that condition?
That's exactly right. And that's what I'm concerned about. And so I just, I just want to make sure that we don't see a thing coming back now that's saying we, we now are going to take down 50% more of the trees, right? That's my concern.
Keeping everybody in the loop on this.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry to put you on the spot, but it's a huge concern of mine out there because we have residents all the way around those, that subdivision out there. So thank you. And I don't have anything else. I'm, I'll quit talking.
Okay, thank you. City manager's announcements.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Newton for filling in.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to thank Mr. Newton for filling in for, for Matt this evening. We might have to switch attorneys.
He did an amazing job.
I should have said that. I'm just kidding.
He's done an amazing job and thank you for being so professional and I appreciate it.
I know Matt will get back and listen, so that's why I said it. Seriously, thank you for, for filling in. So I have that. Just so you know, the city, if you remember, we, we submitted several projects to LMS through Pasco County. Those were submitted Friday afternoon, Friday evening. Those include the purchase of six, the property at 16th Street, the purchase of the property Henry, on Henry Drive, Ninth Avenue. And then also Meadowwood Estates, the retention ponds, connecting those. And then the 12 inch reuse force main, the reverse pumping on that. So there are matches to that. Not, there's not a guarantee that we'll get it or that it'll be approved, but it is at the state now for review. And we'll have to clean up some of the files that were submitted. So we'll work through that process. Also wanted to give you a quick update on Abbott Square. And Mr. Almedia was here, I believe it was last meeting, the trail. So there were five outstanding items. The trail was completed on or roughly the 18th of, of this month. And then I was out there today and saw that the curbing along Smithfield Lane was complete as well. So that now allows for the paving to be completed. So there are still three outstanding projects or items. The discharge pipe in Pond Five, along with any sediment, the paving of Smithfield Lane and the addressing the flooding elevation issue at Beverly Hills Drive. So those are, they are working towards completion of that. Update, I was told today, well, it was updated again today, that if everything continues to progress the way it's progressing, our what permit or water use permit should be on the August 26th SWIFT mud board meeting. So fingers crossed it's on that meeting and on the 26th it is approved. But everything is pointing towards it, it being approved. Also, I think Todd wanted to talk a little bit about two projects that are in the county. I believe each of you have been spoken to or spoken with Todd about them. Clark's Landing on 35A and the Murphy property that is at Forbes and 54 and some of the concerns that staff has, knowing that it's, those are moving forward. And they're in our joint planning area and they're scheduled, at least one of them is scheduled for planning commission next, this month. Next month, sorry, August, planning commission for Pasco County.
Yeah, so there's, as you mentioned, there's two, Todd Vanenberg, Planning Director, two projects or land use actions that we're tracking. And they're in the northeast, like Billy just mentioned. And yeah, we, we have some concerns with them. Both projects are proposed to be rezoned to what they call an MPUD. Several hundred units on each of them, 40, 45, 50 foot wide lots with townhomes. So one, we have an issue with the utilities. We're in a moratorium right now. So a, an individual property owner inside the city limits cannot even submit an application or a petition for residential development right now. So yeah, we have concerns in areas in the JPA joint planning area around the city and our utility service area of the county, of the county going forward and approving land use actions for entitlements for, for residential developments. We'd, we'd like for them to work with us and mimic kind of our hold that we have on residential development. And why? Because, and I explained this in an email to Nick Tarriosi, he's the planning manager and, and a couple of the attorneys that are involved with this. We're involved with updating our comprehensive plan right now. And we specifically have held it off on a couple of the elements, future land use, housing and public infrastructure. And the reason we've held off on that, John Bostic is working on some master planning of water, sewer and reclaimed water. A lot of these elements, we got to figure out the water, where it's going to come from, when it's going to come, how much. And then from that, then we, we can start master planning, what we're going to do on visioning for the city on our future land use element, where we're going to grow, when we're, when we're going to grow, how, how it's going to be, what it looks like, density, all that. So we're updating our comprehensive plan. We're, we're master planning utilities, which is a key element. And we're, we're going to do some visioning. So John proposes to have the master planning done of the utilities sometime in August. We'll take a look at that, share that with Tammy. We have a better feel for where we're at with the water. September, we can do the visioning, when we're, how we're going to grow, what it is, what it looks like. And, and, and then yeah, once we look at the utilities, we might have to make some tough decisions on when we're, how we're going to grow, what it is, what it looks like. Because what this plan on the master planning of the utilities will include to develop the remainder of the city. We look at that as a top priority, first of all. Finish out the industrial corridor and then have a factor in for development, redevelopment in the form based code and CRA. Because we want to promote the development redevelopment where we already have the infrastructure and the services. So we've shared all this information. I, I asked Clark Hobby to respectfully hold off on this one lane use petition on Forbes Road. He, he did that. I appreciated that. But I think as we're working through this information that I just described, we're trying to be proactive. And I think what's happened in the JPA and our utility service area, we should have a say in it. We do have concerns for the Forbes project. They say one of the utility options is to run a, a utility line all the way from Island Boulevard by Silverado, all the way through Island underneath a 301, all the way out to Forbes Road. Talking with John and Billy and I, we have some concerns with the county running utility infrastructure through our city. Again, not that we're opposed to residential, but then you get into compatibility out there on both these locations, Old Lakeland Highway and, and Forbes Road. It's rural out there. It's, it's half acre, acre, two acre lots and they're proposing 40 and 45 foot wide lots. And no conservation subdivisions. We've suggested that. So we're asking them to pause while we finish some of these proactive planning efforts that we're going through with the comp plan and utility planning. And then we said we can circle back with you. And not that we're opposed to residential, but the way it's being proposed is how a lot of the MPUDs are being proposed in the county. And not that we're opposed to that everywhere, but in a couple of these remaining undeveloped lands, the way they're proposing, that's going to set the trend for how all that rest gets developed. And we've expressed our concerns on traffic with that many units, what that'll do. There's one entrance from that 600 units coming out to County Road 54. That's, that's going to.
It's crazy.
So we've expressed these concerns. Billy and I and John met with some of the attorneys. I got another meeting coming up next week with the other one off Old Lakeland Highway. Billy and I talked, we suggested maybe we formalize a, a letter and whoever that gets signed by. Just asking them to, to hold off on land use actions in the JPA where we have an interest and while we're conducting our, our due diligence and proactive planning efforts. And, you know, the developers, they're hungry. Property owners are hungry. They want to get their entitlements and right away. But we're, we're trying to look at what's best, the best interest for Zephyr Hills and, you know, looking at the water. You want to look at compatibility. And so we've shared these concerns, comments with the attorneys, the, the planning department at the county. And, and that led us to tonight where we're at. We'd like to probably prepare a letter signed by whomever and suggest holding off probably for a little bit until we're able to complete our, our efforts.
I, I have a question. When you've talked to them, is there any indication that they would look at their plans, development plans and revise them to larger lot sizes and things like that? Is there any indication that they would?
On one of them, the, the attorney indicated that they would reduce or eliminate 40 and 45 foot wide lots. So that would leave townhomes and 50 foot wide lots. So, I mean, that, that's an improvement.
Okay, that's good.
Still a lot of lots. So, and I said, we'd be happy to meet and discuss with them, whether it's conservation subdivisions. I, I think there's ways you could redesign it and have 40, 45 foot lots, but put them in the middle, but have huge buffers around the perimeter. But.
Well, I think you're, I think you have a good idea. I think we should write a letter and just say that, you know, right now the infrastructure and the environment can't sustain.
What are they talking about? 600 on the wall?
This land use, land use actions with entitlements that showing us is a realistic option for the utilities.
Is not realistic anymore.
And where are those children going to go to school?
Not never, but right now it's premature.
Todd, Clark's Landing is 200.
Is that 250?
250. And, and I appreciate you talking, speaking out to them. And you think about it, because I was just sitting there thinking, okay, 600 units and 200 units, that, that's not going to support them running that line that far. So they're going to want to connect other users when they get that straw there and the pipe there that are around there. So, you know.
They're going to become our competitor.
Will they do it? I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It could be a threat, but they have to have sewer and water to do the things. Why would they do that? I mean, as a responsible government, there's no way they should permit something like that without them knowing where the sewer and water would come from.
Yeah. That's how we would look at it.
Yeah. And, and in all fairness, the, the report does say, I think it lists out four options of how they could get the water. And the Murphy property, they have made mention that they could partner with the city to make a connection, interconnection to Pasco County, very similar to what we've talked about. In the, in this case, it'd probably be the, the Simons Island connection and contributing towards that. So I just want to make sure that that was included in this conversation. That it's, it's not just Pasco or they're, they're bringing a line in. There are a few options. But if we say we can't service, the most reasonable option is they're bringing it through for, in, in their mind, right?
Well, that, that doesn't, that doesn't even make sense. I'm going to tell you what. Where's their closest water? So they're going to bring water and sewer three miles across there? That ain't going to happen. I'm going to tell you, that will not happen. No way. Because that's going to be a.
That's huge expense.
Yeah, that's $10 million right there. You know, spread across 800 units, that ain't going to work. So it's probably like a strong arm tactic for trying to get us in there. That's probably what it is, you know. But you, you look at it in one hand, it's like, well, if they try and force it, we're going to have the traffic anyway. If they try, if they, if they actually did it, we'd have the traffic.
And none of the benefit.
And none of the tax base, none of the benefit and none of the control.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I, I don't know. We need to, you're doing the right thing by trying to stamp it, stop it now.
Yeah, we need to look at that interlocal agreement, the JPA.
Are they allowed to under the JPA?
I think there was some question about that, that one of the attorneys had brought up what are our opportunities to object to a project? But, you know, in my opinion, I think if it's in the JPA and our utility service area, we, we should have a say now legally. To what extent that holds up in a court of law, I guess that's something we need to confirm as well. So we need to check into that. But I think putting them on notice that what we talked about tonight, if y'all are in favor of that, we'll do that and we'll keep you in the loop.
I think we need to reach out to some of the commissioners too and just question them about their decision to move forward with something without having water and sewer in place.
Well, we're supposed to buy the interlocal agreement, have the opportunity to comment. We found out like five days before the planning commission meeting about the one. And so I, I remind them about that.
Well, it seems like concurrency is thrown out the window.
Yeah.
Thank you, Todd.
All right.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Billy, anything else?
No, sir. Nothing else received.
I will move forward to the city attorney announcements. Mr. Newton?
Assistant City Attorney Matt Newton. I guess it's kind of weird to introduce myself after the meeting. But I, I'm one of Matt Maggert's partners over at Shoemaker. I rejoined the firm in May. I'm board certified by the Florida Bar as an expert in city, county, and local government law. Been doing local government laws since I was a law student at the City of Tampa as an intern many years ago, I think 13 years ago at this point. But thank you for being great hosts. I've really enjoyed myself and, and you guys really do a great job here.
Well, I thought you did a good job as well.
Thank you.
City council comments. Councilman Smith.
And I need to know, should we call you Bizarro Mad or Dark Mad or just what?
Dark Mad, please.
Dark Mad. Okay, very good, very good. But thank you. Thank you for, for coming tonight and thank you for doing the job. I appreciate that. I had a real productive meeting earlier this week with Shane and Billy. We talked about projects. I thought it was very productive and I appreciate your, y'all's time on it and appreciate your input and your willingness just to listen. I sure, I really do appreciate that. I like that, that we're being proactive on Cruzen, on, on the parks and the playground. I think that Cruzen, Cruzen Field and Zephyr Park probably initially had no consultants or anything involved in it. They just went out there and kind of laid it probably out in the field. And you know what? It's very well received. So we have great staff. I have confidence that y'all can plan it and come up with something that'll work well. The only other thing I had was, we were talking about trees earlier and I think we need to come up with some type of a tree planting program. I know we have money in the mitigation, you know, something like, I don't know, 1,000 trees over five years or something. But we need to start planting them and using the mitigation bank money to do it because every storm we get, it seems like another big oak falls over. So we've got to start replacing them. But thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wogus.
Thank you. Well, and thank you, Matt, for joining us today. It actually gives me comfort to know that, you know, that our Matt, that we love, has, has some backup that is prepared and now you sort of know a little bit about us and, and the character of our group. And we're glad to have you. The other thing, I wanted to thank all of you for supporting the ladies of the DAR. They work very hard to promote patriotism and support our veterans in this community. I think that this, the idea about the, the fire pit is new. You know, they didn't even have a chance to talk to me yet about it. And normally they would come to me first because I'm a member of the club and also, or the chapter. And, and also I can provide to them gratis architectural services, which everyone likes. So, but that brings me to, you know, that, the discussion that we're having about planning of the park is that, you know, the devil's in the details. So when I look at things downtown and I see that, you know, you know, one of the things we've talked a lot about is this idea of an architecture. you know, one of the things we've talked a lot about is this idea of an architectural language, municipal architectural language for our city. And when we do a building and, or renovation here downtown, and we try to implement some of the elements that you see and repeat the elements over and over again in other structures that we build, it's the same concept when we do, um, the, the parks, every park can have its own character, but just from a planning perspective and a maintenance perspective, it makes sense to use the same supplier for benches, so maybe it's not the same bench, but maybe it's the same supplier of benches. And then, um, you know, the color of metals, for example, you wanna make sure that all these details, and so if you, when you sit down to meet with, um, Ms. Hamilton, and you're ready to kind of design what the overall plan's gonna be with rep services or whomever, um, I'm glad to provide any support or expertise if you'd like. Um, the last thing I'd like to talk about is I received in my mailbox, or, um, in, in the mail, a letter from, uh, Matanya S. John, uh, who is an attorney, and they're, they've sent, they've sent us a neighborhood meeting notice, and on the back, you can see there is a, um, uh, a giant, uh, communications pole planned for something visible from definitely Zephyr Park, and I just wanted to ask every, ask our city manager if he's aware of that, um, so if you can imagine, a, a communications pole right in the middle of Winter's Mobile Home Park is where it appears to be.
No, I think it's off of Simons Road, um, that one.
There are two of them.
It's Simons Road.
Well, there's one on Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, sorry, so, so what you're looking at is, um, it's north of Simons Road.
Right.
Um, county jurisdiction, the meeting is located at Al's Hall.
Yeah, they're having the meeting.
Sorry, that's, that was why the strange looks, I'm like, I remember seeing something on a pole, actually, there's one proposed on Fifty-six as well, um, it's a monopole, I think it's the five G, just a big, big pole.
Is that like those black ones that got put down Three Oh One in front of Walmart?
Yeah, you know, that's the challenge, is we don't, there's no communication, we don't get any.
It'd be, it'd be big, it's, it's gonna be a little bit bigger than the ones on Three Oh One, these are eighty by eighty.
Yeah, and I saw that, and I got one in my mail because we're close to that.
Excuse me, it's a hundred and fifty-five foot pole.
Yeah.
That will be installed in an eighty by eighty, um, area.
Right.
Both parcels, uh, yes, correct, both are, both parcels are located in Pasco County.
Yeah, it's at Simon Road, it's right about Old Simon Road.
Right, yep, back in there.
Yeah.
Back behind there.
Is there any, any effort to, I don't know, make, make them look like trees, or make, I mean, it's like, they're just, it's awful.
I don't know, do we go to the meeting and ask these questions?
That's, it's too late, they don't, they don't care, they don't, they don't, we're, they've usurped us by getting, you know, state, state, uh, funding and, or, or state approvals to be able to do whatever they want whenever they want, so they have a very strong lobby, nothing further for me, sir.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can attend that meeting and, and provide comment, um, but I, I, they are both in Pasco County, uh, and the one specific here is in Pasco County, and so I don't know how much, how strong our voice will be, um, but it is on private property as well.
It's across the street from the city.
But you know, that's a residential area.
Okay. Councilman Spina.
Uh, I have nothing, I would just like to welcome Matt, thanks for filling in, and, and that's all I have.
Councilman Burgess.
Uh, I just wanna kinda follow up what Councilman Smith said, we have professionals that work in this building that I think need, as our parks and things we do, let's utilize our employees as much as possible to get most we can get from these, and you guys know where the maintenance concerns are and all the other things, so I wanna follow up on that, and then, uh, Matt, uh, thank you for filling in there. Of course, I think it's the old man in me, you were saying, oh, I've been there, you know, many, many years ago, and it was thirteen years, I'm thinking, man, I wish I, I wish I could say that.
I've been in business for twenty-five, yeah.
Well, thank you for filling in, that's all I have.
All right, and for me, um, I'd like to thank, first of all, I'd like to thank Ted and his team, Ms. Jenna, uh, Ms. Jessica, for keeping our mileage rate at five point two five, where, that's a really good news for this, excuse me, six point two five.
Yeah.
I, we're going the wrong way, but, um, I think our citizens are gonna appreciate that, and I'm glad you all are doing a great job. And also, I wanna thank Shane, I, I called him with an issue last week that had concerned one of our, like, several of our businesses downtown, and, and you immediately got it taken care of, and I got a call saying, hey, these guys are already out there taking care of it, and I appreciate that. And last thing is, uh, Mr. Newton, it was a pleasure having you tonight, and hopefully we'll see you again. On that, I'm gonna close this meeting.